Welcome, everyone, to this meeting of the South Kingstown Town Council. The date is Monday, December 17th. This is a special session to begin budget preparations with the school committee. Our first order of business is the pledge to the flag. Please rise and join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every teeth and justice.
Thank you. Will everyone please turn their microphones on up here at the table? And will the clerk please take the roll?
Council President Colin.
Here.
Council Vice President Andrew.
Here.
Councilman Calvert.
Here.
Here.
Colonel Sanders.
Thank you very much. So, item three on our agenda, and the only item we have tonight, is a discussion and solicitation of comments from the public relating to general goals and objectives of the development of the FY 2019-2020 municipal and school budgets. Will we... Rob, I'll let you take it off if you have any comments.
Well, actually, I'd like to do a presentation for a bit here, sort of follow in Steve's, Steve Alfred's footsteps and try to put the room to sleep a little bit, but if, in fact, I am putting the room to sleep too much, let me know and we can skip ahead.
I'll do that.
All right. So, tonight, we have really two objectives. We want to explain some of the context within which the budget needs to be formed. We want to provide some data as a starting point for the budgeting process. We want to solicit public comments and get some thoughts on goals and objectives for this year's budget cycle. And the staff really looks to this meeting as an opportunity to learn from council and from the school committee about goals, objectives, and shifting our priorities as we go through the process. On my stuff, please, these are the ground rules that I ask folks to adhere to. Interrupt me if you'd like. I have looked at this slide deck a few times and it is still boring, so please spare folks. If you've got a question, chances are everybody else needs a break, and ask it. The second one is call out concerns. I try to leave my biases outside of the room, but they can work their way in, and please, by all means, if you feel like I'm saying something that doesn't sound or feel right to you, call me on it and let's talk about that. And finally, I'm going to ask folks this evening to think about this as a binoculars exercise, not a microscope exercise. We are trying to set the goals and the objectives for the long view. This is not looking at the nitty-gritty of the budget yet. We haven't got the nitty-gritty of the budget yet. You'll see a pro forma. The numbers in that pro forma are scary, but they're just the beginning point. They're just the start of the conversation, the first time we've taken our pencils out, and we have not yet taken our eraser to the budget yet. So, this is really a chance for us to talk about the long view. Very briefly, this is the schedule of meetings. A slide deck will be online, and anyone who wants to look at what the meeting schedule looks like is free to look at that online. So, I want to start tonight by talking about dimensions of the budgeting process. There's a theory of public administration that says there are three dimensions to everything that happens in public administration. The first is the structure of the organization. What are the rules? What's the organization chart? What's the structure that underlies everything? The second element is culture. What's the attitudes and perspectives, the expectations of the people involved in the process? And the third is the skills. Those are interrelated, but for us in the budgeting process, we rely an awful lot for the skills on professional staff. We've got Chris Sunderland, who is just a phenomenal finance director, Marion Crawford. We rely on the experts who manage the finances and can work magic with those numbers. Cost estimating is done by department heads. Spend analysis and review is done by department heads in consultation with senior management on both sides of the budget side, our budget here, both the school side and the municipal side. Systemic prioritization is something that we try to do continuously. We try to do it all the time. And then alternatives analysis, again, is an ongoing exercise. The folks at the table tonight, though, bring to the table a set of skills that we don't necessarily have in government administration without elected officials. Now, the first skill is, I used to call it storytelling, but folks sort of bristled when I said storytelling because it sounded like I was just sort of asking folks to do something silly. So, I'm now using French, raconteur. We need someone who can translate the desires of the community into actionable items for the bureaucracy, and that is a function that we look to the council and to school committee members to perform. That sets the tone and the attitude and the culture and makes a huge difference in the way we do things. And the second, of course, is that these bodies are the legislators. You're the ones who actually get to set the rules. You set the priorities and you set the rules by which we conduct these meetings and the rules by which we build the budget. What is a municipal budget and what isn't it? Really, the thing to know, I think, about a municipal budget more than anything else is it is our plan for operations. It's not just a bunch of numbers. It's actually how we're going to do the work, and I think it's really important for us to keep in mind that it's not just this year. Annual budgets are the way everybody does stuff, but it's only because it's convenient. It's... I swear, I think that annual budgets came into being because it was a way to keep working men from drinking all their wages. You know, it was just a short period of time. You could focus on it. You could get through that period of time. But ideally, for a complex organization, we don't have just an annual budget mind frame. We've got a multi-year spend in mind as we're doing the annual budget. The budget is really just, on some level, the exercise of balancing our revenues and our expenditures. These are the things that we pay for in South Kingstown. What's missing there on this scale is fire. Fire is paid for through a direct tax by the fire districts. And the revenues that we see. Again, the slide deck will be available, but that's there for you. Roles and responsibilities. Under the South Kingstown Town Charter, the Town Council is responsible for enacting the town budget. The school committee is responsible for developing a budget to support the town's education program. The town manager is responsible for developing the non-education budget in South Kingstown. The superintendent of schools works with the principals and school administrators to develop both the annual and the long-range plan. The town manager works with the director of finance and department heads to develop, again, the annual and the long-range plan. Town manager and the superintendent work throughout the budget season to harmonize the school's program and the overall municipal program. The Town Council has line-item veto power or line-item authority over everything in the budget except for the school portion. With regard to that portion, the council has bottom-line authority. And, of course, the voters have the right to veto anything that we do here if they go to referendum and ask to do that. Now, one of the things that I think there's some confusion about and I want to touch on is what is this property tax transfer? The property tax transfer comes from the ability of the town to move money from its taxing authority, its funds, to the school district. The Town Council has the authority under the budget to set the procedures for administration, and in an ordinance, the Town Council has said, "The Town Council may transfer part or all of the unencumbered appropriation balance from one major program function to appropriations of another major function." The town manager may transfer part or all of the unencumbered appropriation balances throughout the year. And, in fact, that's sort of, that is what happens. The Town Council gives the administration in Town Hall the authority to make transfers throughout the year. You don't get one lump sum at the beginning of the year and spend down. The money is held in the accounts in Town Hall, and then throughout the year, we make those transfers. It's really an administration tool. It's not really a very helpful tool in the development of a budget. The number may be helpful. The authority to go to a particular number may be helpful, but the idea of a transfer isn't a particularly useful concept at the development stage of the budget. So, the second thing I want to talk about is this 4% annual levy cap. This is not a cap on how much money the town can transfer to the schools. It is a cap on how much we can tax the public. We're not allowed under law to increase the total tax levy from last year to this year by more than 4%. That's what the 4% cap says. If we take our whole list of property, our entire tax roll, and that amounted to $4.6 billion, we cannot levy a tax that is 4% higher than the $4.6 billion. That's what that 4% cap is. This year, the 4% cap equals $2.9 million. That's it. We cannot levy a tax higher than $2.9 million. There is, under state law, that's the limit. This does not, however, mean that households may not see an increase higher than 4% if we go to 4%, because in a reevaluation year, reevaluation year, what you're doing is you're increasing the total levy on the entire property list, and if your value on your house went up more than the average, you could actually, because if we went to 4%, we'd be working it against the average on the total increase, you could see a tax higher than 4% in theory.
Rob, just one second. Just to clarify, the $2.9 million is an increase over last year's budget, so...
That's correct. It's the total amount of additional levy under law that we could yield this year. Early in the process, but I will point out that $2.9 million is not a lot of money, and if we look at contractual salary and benefit obligations at the schools and contractual and benefits obligations on the municipal side, and we look at the additional debt service set aside that we're going to have to deal with if we go with a project that's been submitted to RIDE, we're already within striking distance of the cap, just contracts, benefits, and the additional coverage on the interest for the payments for debt service. Puts us right up against that cap before we go any further. Very quickly, I want to touch on, because we're dealing with a large school project, the difference between capital budgets and operating budgets and what a capital budget is. An operating budget is typically just the year-to-year budget that we use to fund salaries, benefits, and buy supplies. Capital budget is really based around the idea that we've got capital projects that are popping up all the time. We've got things that are going on that we'd like to do, things that break, things that need to be bought in order to keep the operations going, and we find, have found, over many years of public administration, that planning to do that on a one-year basis doesn't work very well. So, what tends to happen is things fall out of the annual budget. Capital planning or capital improvement programs have grown up as a way to not deal with a single year's budget with regard to these very large expenditures, but rather to build out multi-year budgets, just as I've suggested. It would be nice to have multi-year operating budgets, at least in the arena of capital improvement. We've moved from single-year budgets to multi-year budgets. Here in South Kingstown, we use a six-year timeframe, and the first year of that sixth year comes back into the operating budget as our capital budget. That means that items that would have otherwise dropped out simply get kicked off to the years down the road. So, I want to talk briefly about the context within which we're doing all of this, this budgeting stuff. Obviously, we're part of a large economy, and, you know, what government does even at the local level affects what happens in the rest of the economy. If we think about it very simply, using this model, when we increase taxes, we reduce the ability of households to spend money, which means that they can't buy goods and services, and that reduces the activity in the economies. Likewise, when we tax firms, we reduce the amount of money that's available for incomes to persons and households. Good news on us, for us, and I'm not going to dive into this too much, but the good news from our perspective is, South Kingstown, at least relative to Washington County, is a pretty healthy economic beast, and looking at the state and the numbers that have come out recently, things look pretty good for the next two years on the state forecasts as well. I have gray-boxed the items that are sort of in flux. Predictions last year were higher than they were this year, but the numbers are still good. As far as employment goes, as far as personal income growth goes, everybody who's looking at it is saying the forecasts for the next two years are good, so I don't think we're looking at any major catastrophes, but then again, folks sometimes get those forecasts wrong. I will point out that averages don't tell the whole story, and one of the places where I've been surprised, and I think this is something I think a lot of people might be surprised about, we've been using for a long time as a measure of ability to pay, we've been using the average home value in South Kingstown. The average home value in South Kingstown is $353,826. But if we don't use the average, if we go to the median, value drops to 306. That means half of the people in town have a house that is valued at less than $300,000. And then if we look at the bottom quartile, the bottom quartile caps out. 25% of the folks in town live in a home that is worth, that is valued at $230,000 or less. In fact, the median in the first quartile is only $210,000. What we're seeing, if you look at the, I guess, at the left side of the screen, it's really that top 13%, 14% that's dragging the values up. We have a, even in that top quartile, what you're seeing is median values of 87%, 87.5% of all homes in South Kingstown currently have a value in the assessor's office of $501,000 or less. There's a top part that's dragging us north, but there's still an awful lot of room, particularly down in the bottom here, for folks to be hurt if we're not careful about tax policy. On the commercial side, the story's pretty much the same and actually a little bit more dire, depending on how you look at it. The median value here is 100, 1 million, that number's mucked up, but 1,470,000. That's a pretty decent median value. That means that half of all the commercial properties in town are valued at more than $1,500,000 roughly, but half are valued at less than $1,500,000. And in the first and second quartile, the numbers drop off very, very quickly. The average in the second quartile is about, I'm sorry, the town-wide average is $627,000. That means you've got a lot of low-valued commercial properties that are dragging that median of $1.5 million down to $627,000. We're actually heavy on the low end on the commercial side, and the bottom quartile, we're seeing very low values with a median value for the first quartile of $248,000 and an average value for that quartile of only $234,000. Now, all of this matters because what we're doing with tax policy is sort of deciding what we're going to do or what we're going to force consumers to do. People make decisions about what they want, and you can plot those on this sort of, this is a modified utility curve, which shows that you've got to choose between apples and bananas here. If you buy more apples, you get less bananas, and you have no choice. You've got to do one or the other. You're stuck by that constraint line. That 45-degree line represents the amount of money you've got available, and you can't break free of that line in most cases unless you can go get a raise or you can figure out how to rob a bank or something. So, this is really, that movement up and down that 45-degree angle is what we're doing with regard to everybody in town when we make a decision about public-private services or, for that matter, this is what we're doing with the municipality, the budgets that we're putting together, when we're choosing between instructional services and debt service. You can't do both without changing what you're urging. So, you either have, you either choose more instructional services or you choose more debt service, and there's no choice other than move up or down that line unless, unless you're going to change the budget, unless you're going to change the tax rate. So, if we've got someone who is over here and they like lots of education services and the other person is down here and they prefer more police services over on this end, the only way to reconcile this is to give either less police services to the one and less educational services to the other, or jump off our budget to a new budget line, which means higher taxes. The problem with this is that these rates aren't only the budget for the municipality, they're also budget for households. So, if we've got a taxpayer A who could afford and wanted this level of education services and could afford this level of education services, when we move to B to make the compromise to maintain that level of service that she wanted and get the police services that the other guy wanted, we've just priced A out of the market. She can't afford it anymore. The real problem is, we can do this to lots of people without even recognizing it. There's actually an income line associated with every household in town, and some folks, because we can't give everybody the tax rate they want, we can't tax everybody at the rate that they can afford, we've got to pick a single rate, and that rate is going to leave some folks on the side where they can't pay or where the injury is real, and other folks are going to be looking down at that line and saying, "Hey, I'd be willing to pay more. I've got plenty of spare income. I could go further than we have." Well, maybe not too many folks. So, this brings me to a very quick exercise here, and this is just a hypothetical budget analysis. It's easy to tell what we're doing when we're talking about what we have to give up on the police side or what we have to give up on the school side. It's not easy to understand how this plays out for individual households. So, what I'd like to do is I'd just like to run through a household budget that is based on some pretty reasonable assumptions. Now, they're not perfect. It is hypothetical, but if we take a household with these numbers... The median household income here in South Kingstown is $72,100. The base sale, the purchase price for a median household here in South Kingstown, I haven't seen this on the market, but I am told, it is $257,500. If you were to buy that home with 20% down, you'd have a debt of $206, and at a rate of 4.37, you'd be paying $12,336 for that mortgage on an annual basis. We've taken some pretty low-ball numbers. Health insurance here is low, but the total budget, and, you know, I'll let you look at these for a second, basic utilities of $2,400 a year, these are pretty conservative estimates. But that means that this household, after taxes at the federal level, taxes at the state level, paying for food for the family, paying for home insurance, paying for health insurance, paying utilities, that household that had $72,000 has only got $60,000 left to play with. So, that's before we've levied any taxes at the local level. This household now has $11,223 to play with. That budget, by the way, does not cover childcare. It does not cover student loan repayment. That budget does not consider interest on credit cards. That budget does not consider unreimbursed medical expenses. So, that household's got 20, has $11,223 left after they pay the local taxes, the fire district, the local property tax, and an automobile tax, which, again, is very conservative. That leaves that household $5,000 a year, which is only $98 a week. So, when we start talking about raising taxes, if we're dealing with that lower quartile and we're dealing with a household who has numbers that look like these, we start having a real impact on people. This isn't just about what's happening to the departments. It's not just about what's happening in Town Hall. It has a real impact out in the world. I want to talk very, very briefly, since we had these slides up, about debt. One of the interesting things about debt service and municipal budgeting is that it limits your future ability to do anything. If we've moved from institutional or instructional, a level of instructional services that's up here with no debt, when we move down to this category where we're trading off only to debt, we're constrained by law. We've got a contract. We can't move from that figure. We, in the future, can only follow these options. And really, if we wanted to maintain the same level of educational service, we have to choose a point that's substantially higher than the one that we might naturally fall to. All right. So, this gets us to sort of a more goals and objectives part of the conversation. It's not just about numbers. It's not just about the impact that we have on people because of the way we play with the numbers. It really is about positive things. It's about trying to do something productive, something useful, something beneficial, and it all starts with the goals and objectives. And I think it's important for us to remember what we mean by goals and objectives. There's a lot of confusion. People, you know, what's the difference between a goal and objective? I think about an objective as the way you get to the goal. It's a series of things you do to achieve the ultimate outcome that you're hoping to achieve. It's objective to objective to objective to objective to the final long-range goal. If you go goal to goal, what you end up doing is you just kick the football around the field. You're not really getting anywhere because you don't have an ultimate endpoint, and this is fine, and lots of municipalities do this kind of, engage in this kind of exercise, going from year to year, just swinging their budget, a million dollars this way, a million dollars that way, but it doesn't get you to where you ultimately want to be as a community. We need to figure out where we want to be in the long run, and then we have to set up our priorities. Now, you can argue that this is sort of semantics, that the objective might be the thing at the end, but the truth is, the thing at the end is different, and we have to remember that. There's a difference between what we ultimately want to achieve and the things that we, the incremental and intermediate things that we have to do to get to that ultimate end. The Town Council objectives and goals has one category that deals specifically with education. It's communication and education. The two objectives listed in that section from the last session are these: to improve communication with the school committee and to determine how to address the impact of declining student enrollment. So, I offer these as just sort of ways to remember and anchor your thinking around what a goal is. A goal is really global. It's really big. It's wishful. It's aspirational. It's the thing you want 20, it's what you want to look back on in your life and say, "I achieved that." It's the long, long-term thing. It's not, "We want, you know, a better snow plowing fleet next year." It's, "We want to make sure that snow is never the cause of death in South Kingstown." It's a very broad objective. It's not an objective, it's a goal. An objective, on the other hand, is specific. It's measurable. It's attainable. It's real, and it's timed. We should be able to say, "This is what we want. We want to get the application in by X, Y, and Z. We want the application to lead to funding. We want the funding to lead to construction at such and such a date." Very specific, very goal-oriented, but very much about this year, right now, right here. Actually, this is one of the most interesting things I've noticed while being in South Kingstown. One of the goals of the council and one of the goals of the community can literally be seen from outer space. This is a goal in the list of goals and objectives that the council has: "To support land use development that maintains the rural, small-town qualities of the community." That is a satellite image, undocked, that demonstrates that Charlestown and South Kingstown are the only place on the eastern seaboard where the forest still touches the sea. We have succeeded to date in maintaining the rural character of the community. What that also, what that image also shows us, though, is that every other community on the eastern seaboard has pursued a different strategy with regard to growth. Everybody else has said, "Let's grow, let's grow, let's grow." Everybody else has sustained the community, has sustained Town Hall, and has grown schools by growing, by letting developers develop, by letting builders build. I stole my own thunder on that one. So, when we think about goals and objectives, one of the ways that I like to think about this stuff is as dichotomies. We want to think about goals, things that we want to... achieve with regard to the character of the ultimate game, the ultimate goal, the thing that we want to achieve. Do we want to be rural? Do we want to be suburban? Do we want to be an inclusive community? Do we want to be an exclusive community? Do we want practical education? Do we want liberal education? Do we want to be more residential or more commercial? Do we want the right, what's the right balance? Do we want URI students to stay on campus? Do we want to pull them off campus? The dichotomies are the way that we begin to organize our thinking around our ultimate goals. And then you look for the variable, what the rural suburban thing is, the value of those things, the value of the variables, the vectors, which direction are they moving, and the rate, the velocity at which they're moving. We have many, many challenges, I'm just going to spin through these very quickly because it gets depressing. But I will point to this one, this is one that we hear about constantly that really needs very urgent attention. Traffic safety in South Kingstown is a major quality of life challenge right now. So the next thing I want to run through is sort of a different way of thinking about our budget, or about budgeting in general. If we try to visualize what's going on, people like to say there's no bottom line in government, and that's the problem. If there were a bottom line, you'd have focus, you'd have the ability to know whether or not you're succeeding or failing. And there isn't, but there is a middle line in government, and it's the tax rate. The tax rate is really a function of two things, the total cost of the program and the total value of taxable property. That's it. How much do you need, and where are you going to get it from? It's the value of the property that drives that whole piece of the equation. And the piece that is interesting for us here is, we're also constrained on that taxable property part, because there's really only two ways to deal with what that value is, that grand list, that total value that I said can increase by 4%, more than 4% per year. That is really just a function of how much every parcel is worth, and how many there are. And that's why the eastern seaboard looks the way it is, because everybody has said, subdivision, subdivision, subdivision will get me the money I need to build out the community. We've avoided subdivision, which means that we've got a growth management problem that is based largely on the decision not to do subdivisions. So on the side, on the sort of production side, on the value of property side, 75% of the puzzle comes from land value. The tax rate is set up by the land value that we've got. The current property owners account for 75% of everything that we spend in Town Hall and in the school department. Growth, that is an increase in the value because of new construction, accounts for about 1%, sometimes 2% of the annual budget. We do not grow quickly. It's 1% to 2% of the budget each year is attributable to new homes. The other stuff that we've got going on, and it's not insignificant, is fines, licenses, state aid, still about 10%. It's not what it used to be, but it's still about 10%. Fines are about 7%. Licenses and permits are about 5%. We have some investment revenue, not a lot, and we have some interdepartmental fund transfers which end up playing a small role as well. The bottom line is, if you want to keep the tax rate low, you've got to drive expenditures low, or you've got to figure out how to increase revenue. We can work on this side, we can work with the state to try to figure out state aid, we can work on fines and licenses, there's not a lot to it, though. The real energy here is all over here on the development, on the growth, on the current taxpayer side. And if we're going to constrain growth, and it is what the community says it wants to do, then the only other thing we can do is keep expenditures to a minimum. This is our classification of property, most of it's residential, nothing surprising here, a little bit of commercial, tangible and motor vehicle is a small part of what we get taxed from. So if we look at this side of the equation, the thing to note about this is that we do have some things that we can do, and we need to be building budgets that are driving us toward the things that we can do. We can affect the ability to pay so that you can end up with folks not feeling like they're being forced out of their home, but it means changing some of the ways we're doing business. I'm not going to get deep into that because I'm already going along here. On the expenditure side, cost of the program is really just two pieces, we can divide it into education and municipal, and we can divide education and municipals' programs into labor and capital. Those are the factors of production, there's nothing else to it. If we consider the total cost of the program, one, 75% of the program comes from education, the cost of the program comes from education, 25% comes from the municipality, about 71% of the total costs of operating the municipal government in South Kingstown are labor on the education side, 20% is labor on the municipal side. My numbers have mucked up here, so I'm going to get through here. 3.7, and this is actually an interesting area. One of the things to note about this is that the ratio between expenditures on labor and the expenditures on capital on the education side are 19 to 1. For every $1 that gets spent on capital in recent years, 19 has been spent on labor. On the municipal side, it's been 4 to 1. For every dollar we spend, we spend 4 on capital. That's a big difference in the programs, and there's lots of reasons about it, it's just worth noting because it also does suggest disinvestment in the capital infrastructure, buildings haven't necessarily been maintained. The labor breaks down the way it breaks down, about half of the budget ends up going to teacher and instructional services. That's a big part of what we do at the municipal level, it's an important part. It's also worth noting that we're doing budgeting this year in a period still where we're seeing a decline in the student population, but we are also seeing an increase in the overall residential population. Our population of the last 10 years has grown by about 120 people per year. If you take 120 people per year, if you take URI out of the equation, if you take the URI students into the equation, it's an additional 110, 120 people coming into South Kingstown each year. So our population is growing, our roads are becoming more congested, demands on senior services are increasing, at the same time that we're trying to balance dealing with... I'm going to skip this slide. Maybe I won't. Very quickly, currently, we don't spend a lot of money on capital on the school side. We do have about a $60 million budget. What we are going to be doing is, we're going to have to move from where we are to a higher rate. This is the rate we're going to have to be at in a few years in order to fund school construction, at least associated with the project that has been submitted to RIDE so far. That's an 8% increase over four or five years. That can't be done in one year because we've got the 4% cap, and because it just doesn't make a whole lot of sense. So we've got to space that increase over a number of years. What that effectively means is that our 4% cap, because we have to dedicate about 2% of it each year to debt service, our 4% cap is going to be driven down to a 2% cap for this period of time. One of the hopes about building new school projects is that by increasing the number and attributes, the number of schools, maintaining the number of schools, and improving the attributes of the schools, we will change people's perception and indeed change the quality of the neighborhood, and thereby attract people into South Kingstown. The theory really is that while tax rates will hurt people's ability to pay, if we can maintain the number and we can improve the attributes, that will induce immigration of sufficiently affluent families to come into town. We're going to improve the neighborhoods, we're going to make South Kingstown the razzle-dazzle place we all know it to be, and have everyone else recognize that, and that's going to get people to move into town. It's a theory worth testing, it's an idea that has some virtue. I will point out that the drivers, though, do suggest that this tends to not help us with regard to affordable housing and affordability in general in town. We're driving the rates up and hoping that people who can afford those higher rates are coming in. So what is it, the other thing to know about it is that good schools are certainly, absolutely, there's tons of data out there, tons of studies out there that say people move to a place because they like the schools. There's no doubt that good schools are definitely something that people look for, but it's only one of the things. And if we think about what drives immigration, what drives growth, there's the housing stock question for one, we have to have some place for people to move into, but aside from that, aside from the availability of housing, there's a question of affordability and commutability. When people are looking for a place to live, they look for an affordable place near where they work, and it's always 30 minutes from work. The average commute time over the last 40 or 50 years has stayed absolutely constant nationwide at 30 minutes. People don't like to live too far from work. So if you're within 30 minutes, and it's affordable, the next question is, are the schools good? We've got to work all of these if we're going to come up with a smart growth concept. We can't put all of our eggs in one basket and have resources committed to just one strategy here. We need to figure out how to come up with a strategy that's going to improve commutability. You improve commutability either by moving closer to Providence, which we can't do, or by facilitating businesses popping up here, maybe not in South Kingstown, but in South County. We need to be working to make it easier for businesses to operate in our neighborhood, because those that are in our neighborhood are going to be the places that people work. So we need to work those things. We need to maintain the crime rate that we've got, and you know, make sure that we continue to be a safe place for people to live. We've got to do this preservation, and you know, there's no doubt that the beaches and the parks and the open space and the rec facilities, all of these things are what makes South Kingstown the wonderful place that it is. These are the things that attract people to South Kingstown. And we've got to maintain that, and we've got to figure out. So, that suggests that we're not going to just tell the developers, come on in, knock down the trees, and put up more condos. We really do need to preserve what we've got, which means we're constrained by the growth model that we have until we can figure out a new one. And we're working on it, but it's not an easy thing to resolve. All right, now all of that brings me to the bad numbers. This is the municipal side. We negotiated three contracts this year, they all came at us at once. We found that we had particularly among EMS, terribly underpaid emergency medical service technicians. We were not able to hire, we had ongoing hiring problems with EMS for months, because nobody was willing to come work in South Kingstown at the rates that we were paying. We have substantial salary increases on the municipal side, a 7.5% increase overall. When you take all of the benefits that go up over time, we are at an 8% personnel increase over last year. And if we look at the capital budget, we're up this year by $100,000, which is absolutely unavoidable because we need to do a revaluation, and we have to put the money aside to pay for the contractor who comes to do the revaluation to make sure that we are treating taxpayers fairly, and that we get a good accounting of the tax rolls that we're relying on to fund this budget and future budgets. And then, really, minor increases, actually, the grant outside agencies should be a negative number as a recommendation on that. And the overall, I'm sorry, the overtime materials and equipment is an inflationary 2.8% increase. It's not pretty. Driven largely by, or constrained largely by, these two numbers, if we go to the state mandatory maximum, we are constrained to $2,932,000. If we try to live within inflation, which is always one of my goals, I think that government should, you know, certainly keep pace with inflation. I mean, we have to pay for fuel bills and things like that, but we should try not to drive inflation, we should not try not to be ahead of it. If we were to do that, we'd be constrained to 1.6, and that, right now, is a number we could not attain. And finally, I want to just touch on a bit of the capital improvement plan and talk about the bond referendum that, or bond referendums that we have in store for us, based on the submission to RIDE that was made back in November? No, November? September. This is just the schedule for those bonds, and this is, you saw that chart earlier, this is getting from the tax due to the increased tax rate. And this is where that fits within the overall capital improvement program. It is, it's huge. I will say that the $81 million that we're contemplating for schools and road improvements, but the $81 million that we're contemplating is twice the amount of debt the town of South Kingstown has ever had. It's a big number, it's not something that we've done before and are prepared to do again, it is a big number. We are financially sound, our bond rating is damn good. The standard for indebtedness is that your debt not exceed 10% of your operating budget. We can do this without exceeding 10%. We're bumping, yes, bumping close to it, but we're not getting to that benchmark. We can do this, but it's not, you know, it's not something we can do without breaking a sweat. And also is in the environment where the state is not helping us, and has not helped us for a long time on operating revenue. So that was Cherry.
Very good, thank you. I believe that brings us to you, Kristin.
That's a tough act to follow. Thank you. Okay, great, next, okay. Next slide would be great. So we've broken down for you, in the typical fashion that you've seen it every year, what our pro forma would look like if we just took exactly what we have now in terms of salary and benefits, and our estimated revenue and our expenditures, and we push out to say, if we were to receive a 0% property tax transfer just to the schools, we would be cutting $4.3 million from our budget. At 1%, it would be 3.8, at 2%, 3.3, and at 3%, 2.7.
Kristin, sorry, can I just interrupt you?
Yes.
My phone is buzzing, 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 the live stream isn't working, I don't know if there's any...
I don't, I'm not in charge of the live...
No, I know you're not, I'm not addressing, I was just, you. Okay, I just didn't know if anyone was aware of that and could maybe fix that for those at home.
Please, you can interrupt me as well.
Sorry.
So don't ever apologize for interrupting.
Thanks, I could hear, buzz, buzz, buzz.
And so, this is probably, I'm 10 years as your superintendent, and this is probably the most dire projection in terms of the amount of cuts we would have to make within our school department that I've seen since I've been here, and... Next slide, please. So, I'm going to start because many around the table are new to this conversation at the table, that we just dip into a little bit of our demographic information that surrounds our needs as a school department. Next. And this slide shows you that we are, we have less than 1% or 1% of English language learner population in South Kingstown. We're a low incidence ESL population, or ELL population, the statewide average is 8%. It's 17% poverty, as categorized federally by free and reduced lunch levels in our district, where the state average is 48%. And this slide just shows you the ESL levels and summaries. Students who come in and are assessed with ELL or ESL needs are either at a 1 through 5 proficiency level of English language acquisition, and we are, or are a low incidence population. And we are, or are a low incidence population, but the Providence Journal last year, if you remember the article, we are on the rise, much quicker than most districts, suburban districts in the state, which we think is a great thing. But it, there does come with some anticipated cost. And so, as of September of 2016, we had 44 ESL students speaking 12 languages. And they were largely in, well, West Kingston Elementary School. And as of October of 2018, we had 60 students in seven schools speaking 12 different languages and various dialects at five different levels of English language proficiency. So some of the support staff that you've seen recently being added to our budget has been to support ESL students in each of the schools that we have. This breakdown shows you all of the different grade levels, numbers of students, languages, and levels, just to give you a sense of the diversity in our schools today. And then the next slide is just a pictorial look at the students, the languages, and the schools. The next slide shows you the special education populations or the special populations. 13% of our students are supported with special education services. The state average is 15%. We are in line with the national average. The next slide is, shows our graduation rate is on an increase. We are at the highest level of students graduating in South Kingstown in the last decade. Roughly 94% of our students graduate from high school. This is just a one slide that depicts the Cropper enrollment forecast going forward. It's certainly not a perfect instrument, but a lot, a lot of research went into this to show that it is projected by their standards. And if you want to dive deeper into their data, you can see many of the elements that Mr. Zarnetsky alluded to in his presentation contribute to this. And it's predicting by 2027, we'll be down 604 less students and we'd really like to avoid that.
Kristin, I have, just have a quick question. So, it wasn't in this data, but previously I saw enrollment in 2018 at 2978. So I wonder what the...
This is Cropper. So this is, this is from the demographer that was hired to go along with the facility study.
But the 2018 is actual, right?
The 2000, this entire slide comes from Cropper. But the 2018, you're right, we just got the official enrollment snapshot from RIDE. So I'll check on that one.
Thank you.
The next slide is our official enrollment as of 2018. And it shows the cohort band at the bottom. And so, you're seeing 2,959 students were in South Kingstown as of, I think, October 23rd. The next slide shows, red shows where we're down, green shows where we're up. And so, certainly not going to dig into it tonight, but hopefully it can help you get a sense of our enrollment predicament. This slide is an enrollment versus FTE decline. And in 2008, 2009, we had 3,591 students and 589.6 full-time equivalent staff. And this year, we have 2,978 students with, in brackets, it shows the enrollment decline year to year, and 485.80 FTEs. And so you're seeing that the net change is 17% enrollment decline, 17% staff decline. The next slide is a very broad representation of average class size. And so, obviously it differs school to school and classroom to classroom and program to program. So there certainly are kindergartens that have 12 and 13 students. There are high school classes that have 27 students. And so, we have an entire PowerPoint on, by school grade level, a very long piece. If you are interested, it's on, loaded on board docs or we can send it to you if someone would like to take a look at that. The next slide shows charter school enrollments. And so, in our district, the high of charter school enrollments was in 2006 with 153 students. Shortly thereafter, you went to all-day kindergarten. And that was before it was required by the state of Rhode Island, and that helped a lot of families. And now, in 2019, we're at 81 students. And they're largely at Compass School and Kingston Hill Academy. And we also have seven students at the Green Charter High School and one student at the International Charter School Dual Language Immersion Program in Pawtucket. And then the next slide shows our charter school enrollment. The real story is the next slide, which is career and technical center enrollment. And you're seeing an increase, most significantly at Narragansett. And secondly, at Charahoe. So we went from having nine students to 14 or 15, 13 students to last year having 20, and this year 29. And there was a change in some of the career and technical programming at Charahoe and Narragansett specifically. They started to open their programs to ninth graders. And we found that when students come to our high school, they tend to fall in love with our teachers and our programs, and we can keep them. But if they're being pulled right out of eighth grade, lots of students go to private school from the eighth to ninth grade transition. And so, that's contributed to the amount of students that are leaving. The MET has been relatively the same in the last six or seven years. We don't have any students at Davies this year. We have three at North Kingstown, zero at Westerly, and went from five to 21 in Narragansett. So the last time this slide was updated, we had 69 students. I've signed more applications this year. Some are for current eighth graders on their plans for next year, but some are students right now who are moving to mostly Narragansett. So when you take a look at the career and technical center graph, it's significant this year. And we now have programs. So we have state-approved programs. Our redesign of the high school administrative team and our STEM director have worked directly with teachers and teacher interest and enthusiasm and student choice. And we're offering a CNA and EMT program. We're offering carpentry and computer science, biomedical.
So, forgive me for not being an expert in this field, but what are the district's obligations to pay for students who choose to go out of district for career and technical? If we, if we're providing career and technical services in the district, do we still have to pay for people to go and seek them elsewhere?
That is correct. They can go anywhere in the state of Rhode Island. And if there's a program that's open to statewide, and if there's a program that's open to just region-wide, then they can go regionally. But they can go anywhere in the state of Rhode Island and we pay for their tuition and transportation expense. We only transport in the geographical area. So we wouldn't transport to like the Met and Providence or Davies. But most of our kids, as you see, actually, pretty much all of our kids are going in our geographic. So most of our students that are leaving us to go to Narragansett, we have a computer science program and they're leaving to go to a computer science program. And the caveat that could be the reason is that their computers, our computer science program is not centered towards gaming and their computers, which was a choice, a value and of our community and the Narragansett program is. But there are lots of different reasons that children are giving their guidance counselors for why they're leaving. If a student wants to go into a cosmetology, Charahoe has a cosmetology program. We already have a bus going to Charahoe, but if they would prefer Westerly, then we're obligated to send them to Westerly. I testified in front of the Career and Technical Center Board that there should be some sort of a rating system similar to when parents are shopping for a college. If your son or daughter wants to be a nurse and you're going to URI or UConn and they're saying to you that 98% of the nursing students pass their qualifying examination, that would want me to feel comfortable sending my child there. You know, that 100% of their nursing faculty are credentialized and have experience in hospitals. So not all career and technical center programs are created equal. And there is no, at this time, measurement scale so that parent, so that our professional school counselors can help parents to figure out the best program for them. Sometimes the reason that we're given is that, you know, my friend goes to Westerly, and that's why I want to go to Westerly. We, I'd like to be on a certain sport team. And as long as they're applying for and get accepted into the career and technical program, then we do not have the right to deny tuition. So then the next slide would show you the career and technical center tuition change. So we've gone from 2008, 2009, spending $259,000 on CTE tuition to this year, $1.1 million. And that's, that's not as accurate. I haven't, we haven't tallied the new applications. We haven't gotten billed yet from the, from the district's to change that, but it's higher. And if you can skip one more. And then this is a look at our independent and parochial school enrollment. So we have 319 students who choose to attend independent and parochial schools instead of our public schools. And we track that as well. The next part is really our budget conversation. And it starts with our revenue assumptions. And so, this year, we believe that the federal funding projections are flat. We are likely to lose a little bit of funding in the areas of Title I, Title II, and IDEA funding. The state aid projections is the ninth year of the funding formula. And the reduction that we're going to see in the funding formula is approximately $711,000. And again, that's not including any decrease in enrollment. So at our current enrollment, we're looking to take a look at $711,000. Every student that leaves us beyond our current enrollment will be less than we receive in terms of state aid. Our undesignated funds, we're estimating to use 19.47% or $500,000 of the fund balance to be applied as revenue. Our Medicaid reimbursement, which was formerly $800,000, we're projecting $425,000 this year. And tuitions to the ITA and CTE are projected at zero because that's our current tuition in. Expenditures, our teacher salary increased by 2%. Please don't show them this slide where yours increased by 7.5% because I felt... Because that just hurts my heart. So, plus steps, which are required by law, and that is $750,000. Employee health insurance costs increased by 7% and dental by 3%, which is an additional $449,000. And out-of-district tuitions and transportation increased by $822,000. And we just, you've often asked, this body has asked, like, where are we in terms of our collective bargaining agreements? We have three groups, NEASK, the teachers, their wage increases is set at 2% by contract and their co-pay is at 20%. We were asked last year or the year previous to bring it up commensurate with the town. And that goal was achieved. The SKESP is our support staff, clerks, and teacher assistants. We're in negotiations currently with that group. Council 94, who are our maintenance and custodial staff, again, that is to be negotiated currently. The next slide just shows you the certified pension rate for the employees' retirement system of Rhode Island and MERS pension system on behalf of our school employees. Certified pension rate 2003, we were paying 7.99%. Of course, the employee contributes a similar amount. And now, even with pension reform, I feel like it's been 100 times, but we're going to go with two or three. We're at 15% contribution on certified pension. And it went from 0 to 13.16 on the non-certified pension rate. The next slide is the state aid trend. And back in 1996, the state of Rhode Island was contributing to 28.9% of the South Kingstown school budget. And last year, they contribute 9.9%. So that's significant. This year, that was contributing $6,108,908. And next year, it looks to be about $5.4 million. And so it will be even lower than 9%. And then this shows the sort of sliding scale of the, of the property, of the state aid to South Kingstown. And folks often ask me, is the, is the state aid, when is the, when is, when does the, I can't think of, I just lost the word for it. When does, thank you. When does the funding formula end? Well, typically it would end at 10 years and then stay flat. We haven't seen flat yet. It's continued to go down and down for us. And so recently, at RIDE meetings that I've attended, certainly the urban communities are asking if they can take another look at the funding formula. When that happens, the more affluent communities don't do better. And so, I'm now bracing myself for not flat. I'm bracing myself for in two years, a continued decrease. Next. And despite that, I think we're pretty proud that we've been able to maintain costs and deliver an excellent education program. And so, you see that back in 2001, the school budget was $36 million. And in 2009, when I acquired the budget, it was $59 million. And 10 years later, $61 million. And so certainly, we've tried to be very careful with the taxpayers' dollar. And we think that we get a very nice return for that investment. And that gives you a sense of the school budget history. And the next slide, blue is before Kristin, yellow is after Kristin. This slide keeps me humble and makes me really realize why 2010 was just so really difficult for our educational community. And so, what they were used to receiving was a property tax transfer in 2006 of 8.2%, 6.4%, 5.2%, 5.0%. And then lots of different pieces impacted the 2010. A piece of it was the local economy, unemployment. There were, the state aid piece also hit us. I believe that was the year the teacher evaluation hit us. It was a banner year. But we, and we had very, very difficult conversations with our employee groups, each group. And there were 0% raises for several years. But you see that 2010 and '11, 0, then 0.6 for the property tax transfer to schools, 0.3, 1.5, 0.9, 1.4. And in the last three years, we've enjoyed a 2% or more increase. Last year, 2.933. And we're very grateful for your support to make that happen. We certainly put it to good use. And then the next slide shows sort of our life that we've, we've lived with regard to the percentage increase in the property tax transfer. The next slide, we certainly have not had robust conversations within the school committee themselves, but some of the things that they're thinking about identifying would be an additional middle school family community engagement teacher. This historically has been someone who is certified as a school social worker, has flex time. I believe the schedule is like 10 to 4, so that there's a lot of home-based outreach and a lot of support to families. We've hired in the last two years, two family community engagement social worker teachers, one for the elementary level, one for the high school and middle school level. And there is a lot of work and a lot of need. And so this is something that the two different school committees have talked about. The second piece where we certainly don't have agreement yet on the school side is that the Rhode Island Department of Education is investing in safety. And so they're saying that if school departments wanted to add an additional middle school or elementary or school, I should say, school resource officer, that they would be willing to pay half of the salary and benefits. And typically, in our, in our town, we've been able to, we've been able to cost share with the police department because there's certainly a correlation between our school department having a school resource officer and the juvenile detectives load that they're bearing for the entire town. And so, we would be looking at a quarter of the salary and benefits and it would be the goal to increase safety in the elementary schools. Right now, we have one school resource officer for the high school and one for the K through 8 schools. In theory, that position would transfer to, not necessarily that person, but the FTE would transfer to the elementary schools. And a new FTE to support solely Broad Rock and Curtis Corner. And the elementary SRO would go every fourth day to each elementary school, get a really consistent consistency with the staff and the students and the layout of the building in case of an urgent situation. We...
Kristin, I have a question on that line item. So does RIDE indicate how long they would pay the salary, the half of the salary?
No.
Okay.
I don't believe that it's just one year, though. It seems to be for a significant period of time, but they have no out date that I'm aware of. We are going to be adding a new line item, and I know you just love seeing new line items, so I thought that should be sort of highlighted for you. The new line item... The new line item is for school lunch balances. Because, as you know, we, our school committee made a decision last year or the year previous to ensure that no child will get an alternative lunch. Children are getting a full lunch whenever they order it, regardless of the ability to pay. Students who are supported through the free and reduced lunch program do not need to pay. But we now are accruing some school lunch balances. And so, we have a mechanism in place to talk adult to adult to try to reconcile the lunch balance without involving the child in that conversation. But we, the school lunch program can't balance it itself. Last year, it was an unbudgeted expense. This year, we're going to have to budget for it. We also have a small need to increase an unbudgeted expense due to the lunch program, which we think is a very, very wonderful thing, to move from styrofoam trays to having a more sustainable tray. And there are conversations that the school committee is having now with parent groups that have asked to go to washable trays, which is very different. It'll be a different line of thinking in terms of our ability to wash trays and purchase trays and the school lunch programs adding of staff to accomplish that. We're early in those conversations, but the school committee has just developed a sustainability committee. And they're working alongside parents in this regard and also in other areas of our school department. And then, we know even though we increased CTE tuitions and the school committee most recently in November did a line item transfer or a transfer from our undesignated fund balance to our general operating fund to balance the unbudgeted, unpredicted CTE tuitions, we know it's going to be even more next year. Because we now know that those ninth grade students that were already captured, captured seems like a harsh word, but invited to another school department are now going to be 10th graders and a whole new ninth grade crew are going to be sought after. We're going to have to base our predictable ninth grade on our current ninth grade. That means our trend will just continue. So, you're going to see an increase in that line item due to actuals.
And then, I just have one more question on this slide. So, there are no dollar figures associated with each individual line item. But is there a feeling at least for these increased needs for the total for the page?
So, the additional middle school FCEs roughly between 80 to 100,000. The one quarter of a school resource officer is probably 15 to 20,000. The school lunch balances, 15,000? The styrofoam tray replacement, depending upon what the school committee chooses, could be...
As low as 5,100 and high as over 100,000 if we go with the washable trays.
And the CTE, another...
Probably about another, at 16,000, about 15,000.
Another 300,000 for those not on the mic.
And Joe, it may go without saying, but it needs to be said. Of course, if we do another school resource officer, the other quarter comes from the police department's budget. So, it is from the town. The total cost there is 30 to 40,000.
Different pocket.
Different pocket.
Thank you.
So, then, the, can you advance one slide? Thank you. So, these slides aren't really, they're not, they were there for the school committee and they just thought they would inform you. But your bottom line, as the manager point out, not a line item. And so, the school committee is going to have to decide what areas are going to be reduced. And it's really quite a big number. And so, they asked me to come up with slides on what they either can't be reduced or would be reduced with some difficulty. And so, that's this slide. And then, the next three slides are really the areas that we're going to be targeting some of our budget reduction conversations on. I just, you know, I do know that superintendents in other towns never have to have budget reduction conversations. They just add things or keep things the same. That's never been my life here, and it's not because of you. It's because of the State Department of Education and our decrease in funding. But it's difficult every year to continue to cut. It's difficult on staff morale. It's difficult asking people to do more with less. And we've tightened our belts for a decade. And so, it's just getting harder and harder to consolidate. So, if you can go to the administrator page. Yeah, thank you. So, this, they asked for, how many administrators do we have? And so, when you saw the managers' percentages of employees throughout the town, this is ours. We have 23.5 FTEs of certified school administrators. District-level personnel are in white and school principals are in yellow. And they, out of 485.8 FTEs, they are 4.8% of our total employees. And to the right shows you the cuts we've made in the last couple of fiscal years. And the next one is exempt employees. So, these are salaried, non-union personnel who are not certified school administrators, who are not entitled to overtime when working over 40 hours in one week by the Fair Labor Standards Act. But they are not certified administrators, as I said. And so, this is 9.3 FTEs out of the 485.8 or 1.9% of employees. And last year, we reduced a full-time equivalent in this area. The next slide is our most important employee group, our teachers, our magic makers in the classroom, the reason that we exist for students and for teaching and learning. And there are 313.2 FTE teachers or 64.5% of our employees. And sometimes, there's a lot of confusion over who is a teacher. I mean, obviously, it's your classroom teachers and your elementary itinerants, library, phys ed, art, and music. But it's also preschool special education teachers, your school nurse teacher, dean of students, which is not an administrator, it is a teacher in the bargaining unit, guidance counselors, occupational therapists, physical therapists, special educators, ESL teachers, interventionists, instructional coaches, speech-language pathologists, social workers, psychologists, social emotional learning coach, family, community engagement teacher. But they're all teachers in the same bargaining unit, paid at the same salary scale, same work year, with the exception of the guidance counselors at the high school who work additional days. And this slide, folks told me this is a little misleading. This is the way Mary Ellen in my office calculates the FTEs. But the next time you see this slide, we're going to break out social workers. We're going to break out other therapists, like what each therapist is. There's some, to make it just more clear for you. We've tried to break out some, but it shows that we didn't have a reduction in teachers last year. We added 5.2 FTEs. Some were added due to school committee vote on need. And the other were voted based upon contract. So, when we exceed an enrollment in a particular school or grade level or area, it necessitates an add. The same for if a student requires a one-to-one teacher assistant or a one-to-one nurse or a different special education service than we have already budgeted for, we need to add by state law. And the next item is ESP bargaining unit members. There are 110.8 FTEs, 22.8% of our employees. And they have many roles as well, administrative specialists, administrative secretaries, clerk, payroll clerks, account clerk, two, teacher assistant, one-to-one teacher assistant, tech, technical clerical support, child outreach screeners we've brought in as bargaining unit positions. It was formally something that we contracted services. We have job coaches, bilingual teacher assistants, supervisory aides, HR payroll assistants, and most recently, registered behavioral technicians in this bargaining unit and our van driver. And in terms of the ESP reductions, last year, we had a 0.8 FTE reduction in this area. And then, our beloved custodians and maintenance folks who are, there are 28. And that's 5.8% of all employees. We have two maintenance members, general maintenance. We have a plumber. We do not have HVAC anymore. We have an electrician. We have head custodians, custodian one, two, and three grades. And it just shows you the breakout that there are four folks in the district maintenance. That is the two general maintenance workers and the plumber and the electrician. And then, we have 7.5 custodians at the high school, 4.5 at Curtis Corner, three at Broad Rock and Peasdale, and two at our smaller elementary schools. And previously, we've cut in this area, this is an area that Marian and I just don't think we can cut anymore. They have a certain amount of real estate to cover in terms of their cleaning and they keep the schools very clean. And we just think that if you cut here, you're going to see a drastic decline in overall cleanliness and overall maintenance. And then, the last staffing slide is really our district staffing percentages so that you can take a look at them in the aggregate. And next, we have the meeting objectives for us in terms of staff and preparation for our first meeting in January with the school committee. We need you to settle in on an initial property tax transfer so that we, so that we can start building the budget, so that we know what to cut or add. And what, one of the pieces that I thought that you were going to speak of that we'll have to fold into the conversation is that RIDE now requires, ever since the last election on the ballot for facilities, they require a set aside for maintenance of buildings. And that's not been factored in to either of our budgets in the way that it needs to be lawfully going forward. I promised them you would explain that to them, but that hasn't happened so far. So, that's to be tuned into. And so, you know, unfortunately, we're acutely aware that reductions will have to be made again this year. When you go back to something in the charter that says, "I sit down with all administrators and principals and start carving this out," we spent a half day on it today. So, we're already, you know, having very dreadful conversations. This is the second of our budget here, budget discussions. And we've mapped out that we have one more with you in March and three more as a school committee before our budget or the school committee's budget is due into the town manager on Valentine's Day, which I just find ironic because it's not all that romantic or happy. That's when the town charter says we need to get it in. And the last two slides show you that the South Kingstown School Committee met last week and respectfully requests a two-point, that you consider a 2.5% property tax transfer as discussed at their December 11th meeting. This is how much of a property tax transfer they feel is needed in order to meet the needs of our students. And on the next slide, I thank you so much for your support and remind you of Mr. Alfred's words, that budget is a process. And that we're in it with you and we know that we'll be going all the way through April with you as partners in this process. We thank you for your support. And that is all that I have for you unless you have any questions.
Any questions for the superintendent here at the table? Thank you for that presentation. Rob, do you have any thoughts on that?
I think you've heard enough from me for tonight, or at least for the moment.
Kristin, I have a quick question, a couple, you know, the one thing I was thinking about was the maintenance increase. But you brought it, you brought that up at the end, which is great. Any idea percentage-wise what they're thinking?
It grows to 3%. So, it's on an escalated scale. We believe it's 1 point, yeah, 1.5 to 2.
It goes, I understood to 3.
Yes, I agree.
Would the, of the overall budget, or is that...
Of the, so whatever, can you do a briefing? Do you have your own mic? Perfect.
What it is, is it's the percentage of our overall budget. They take into consideration that we can include a number of items. RIDE is still vetting that out as to what this would include. Obviously, the maintenance staff, we can include, custodians, we cannot include. Any constructions or maintenance that we're doing on facilities, like this year, what we did was we did roofwork at both the high school and Peasdale School. That is included in the number to add up to it. This year, we have to come up with about $631,000. The two roof projects alone come up to that $600,000. So, in future years, if we continue with capital improvement projects, that is some construction projects, we should be able to meet that. If we don't do that, then we're going to have to do the maintenance and have to accommodate the operating budget to pay for those costs. Like I said, they're still vetting out, custodians are not allowed, snow plowing's not allowed, landscaping is not allowed. However, software that will be used for preventive maintenance for buildings, they're thinking about that. So, like I said, they haven't finished vetting it out, and I'm not sure when RIDE will be done with that.
Thank you. I just had another quick observation, and you kind of touched on it, Kristin, during your presentation regarding what was classified as a teacher. And it seemed to be pretty broad. So, before you mentioned that, though, on the enrollment versus FTE decline slide, I don't know what number that was, but it talked about the 2008 to 2018 change of a negative 613 students to a negative 103.8 FTEs. I guess what was interesting to me was the percentages were very close to each other. But you're starting at different numbers. So, we're talking about, when you look at 613 versus 103, to me, when I immediately looked at that was, we're losing about one FTE per six students that we lose. Now, granted, you explained that in more detail, so I appreciate that. But I guess that's something I would want to kind of dive deeper into to better understand.
Understand the cuts of the FTEs?
Right, only because, you know, we're looking at, if you lost 613 students, we lost 103 FTEs. How does that relate in a way?
When Deborah Gist came to South Kingstown in 2010 and addressed the town council, it was not a very pleasant conversation. And what she explained is that our, her pupil expenditure is so much higher than similar districts in our area and in the state. We're still in the top five of per pupil expenditures because we have more staff. And we like lower class sizes. We value lower class sizes and we value all of our buildings. And so, that was the conversation that she had that told us that we're not going to be favorable in the funding formula, but that was the piece.
So, that was something that really affected...
That's affected everything.
Right, from years ago to now.
We still certainly value low-class sizes. We value our community schools. And so, an investment in that has been, I'm going to go back to the town manager's first couple of slides, it's our values in our town. And so, that, those have been difficult cuts. We've seen them in every building, in every grade level, in every area, from administration, exempt, custodial. And there are some areas where we just can't cut anymore. I mean, we had conversations today with building staff about the number, very granular conversations of they've got to keep a certain staffing level in order to maintain cleanliness of the building, in order to maintain coverage on the phones, planting someone at each door for student safety. We're at that level.
Kristin, I just have a question about...
Rob, could you just use the microphone?
What are we saying here?
Several, probably three or four years ago, it was said at this table that that's how many people we've cut from the budget. Sometimes, they're just not needed in that area anymore. And so, for example, if we once had five one-to-one nurses and we don't now have five one-to-one nurses, you didn't cut it from the budget. I didn't cut it from the budget. It was a change based on student need. And so, to say that they were just cuts are not always a true statement. In some areas, they were just less. So, for example, we had a CNA need last year. Now, we don't have a CNA need for a particular student. So, that was not a budget cut. That was just a change in student need. It was just a semantics piece.
So, with the CNA in that case, is that position still in the budget?
It is for this year. It is for this year because it was anticipated that the student would need. And then, my understanding is the student moved. So, that's an automatic budget cut you get to put in there.
So, I'm just trying to understand here. These, this is a census number. This is your actual body count on a particular day. Some day, I mean, you have to make that determination on some day of the year.
Correct.
But the budget may have a larger number of positions than this represents. Is that right?
Actually, and sometimes it's less. So it was stated, you know, that we cut them. You all cut this amount from the budget. So we were asked probably three years ago by the then-chair of the school committee to put that reminder in. If that's confusing to folks and not applicable now, we can certainly take that out. But we are, yes, we're down that amount of FTEs. That's reflective and accurate.
But I guess the question is, are we down in the budget or are we just down on the ground? If on the ground, we have fewer people, but the budget still reflects more people...
No, we're down in both.
Okay.
So for example, this year, last year's budget is lower. We have less staff in last year's budget than we have on the ground. That reflects a 5% FTE increase that was not in your budget because they were added after the budget. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So these are actuals. When you compare budget to actual, they're going to be off by 3 to 5, positive or negative, in any given year depending upon student need. And mostly depending upon... We round out our sections in June, so if in March we're budgeting for one section and then by June we have enough students where we need two sections, by contract, we need to add another section, and that's outside of the budget, but that is in our actual.
So I'm just wondering what, if any, are the contractual barriers that might exist to sharing resources between municipal and school administration, perhaps? I'm just looking for potential places where, you know, town, we have financial administrators, school has financial administrators, maybe combined, there's a place where we can find savings in that regard.
So there's multiple issues. There are contractual issues. I don't know what your administrative exempt employees have for contracts, but typically there are contracts in place. They tend to be a year or two or three-year contracts. But aside from that, there are administrative inefficiencies that come when you try to build some efficiency. So the design of that integration is really, really important. And I don't think that that's a thing you do in a year. I think that's a thing you do over the course of two or three years. Two or three years may be enough to build an integrated system for most functions. If you were going to do, and I've done this, if you were going to do lawn maintenance or grass cutting between the public works and the... That can be done pretty quickly. But if you're talking about merging complex systems, it takes time. And you don't usually see a huge number of reductions in positions either because the folks who are working are typically working. There's some efficiency to be gained there, but it's often not as much as you'd hope.
So you already do our grass cutting? Thank you very much. That's wildly helpful to us, and we would totally allow you to do our snow plowing. I think that would be pretty awesome, but we're still going to need those same custodians to clean the buildings every day, and they are the ones that do a majority of our snow plowing. Certainly, the town folks come through and they plow our lots, and that is wonderful. But, you know, it's difficult to be able to think about it. We're very different entities, and it's certainly something we're willing to explore. We haven't to date, but that certainly can be something we can harmonize. Wasn't that your word, harmonize, in the future?
And there are good examples. I mean, there are examples of integrated systems, financial accounting systems, school and municipal in Rhode Island where it's worked, and there are examples where it hasn't worked. Again, I'm not sure we want to jump in and sort of sink or swim, but it is something worth exploring.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting that we necessarily do that this budget cycle, but I don't think these numbers are getting prettier in the foreseeable future, so it's something to consider as we move forward.
Certainly fits the idea of thinking about the long run. That's right.
One of the quick things I noticed on this sheet while we're on it was, I don't know if it's a magical number or not, or if it's, you know, a standard, but when you go back to '08, '09, and you go to '18, '19, you're roughly at 6.09 to 6.14 students per FTE. I just found that kind of interesting.
That was not by design. That's just what it is. And so, I mean, most of our, just like on your side, labor is the largest piece of our budget, and top step teachers are the largest piece of our budget. So we're blessed to have them because they bring with them lots of expertise and experience teaching, but we don't have a new workforce, and so it's more costly for that wonderful experience.
And speaking of that, look, we're going to assume you're going to have to make cuts, I guess, in a way. But when you're looking at making cuts, if it's based on seniority, or is it...
Yes, so it's the last one in, first one out concept in the state of Rhode Island by state law.
But then technically, if someone's been there for a long time and is planning to retire in a year or two, then you might have to replace that person, but start all over again.
And sometimes typically, the direction that we've been given by the school committee is hire the very best person that you can for the students in South Kingstown regardless of cost. And so it's not, you know, as you saw in Narragansett recently, they offered a retirement incentive. We have played with that in the past and certainly is available to look to again. But when we looked at who we're hiring over the last five to 10 years, we're hiring largely top step teachers. So we're not hiring... In an interview, first-year teachers and top step teachers, it's very different what they can offer to students in terms, and we value that experience. We're not just looking for top step teachers. We hire the best person.
That comes from the interview, so it could be someone with experience versus someone just starting out?
Correct. We have a school committee personnel assignment team policy, and it says hire the best. There are certainly districts in Rhode Island that only hire first step, and they discount experience. That's not been something that we do in South Kingstown, but we hire the best.
Thank you.
So if I may, I have a question on the revenue side. We saw the increase in cost of paying tuition to outside communities. What are we doing to attract students to our community to gain that tuition into our revenues?
So we do have a career and technical center coursework. We've worked really, really hard in the past three years to develop those now RIDE-approved programs, and they are in seven areas. And so I think we're probably the only district that went from zero to seven in one approval year. That was a heavy lift for our high school. And the reason that we were able to do that is with the pure enthusiasm of some of our high school teachers who were interested in creating career pathways and through the vision of our high school principal and our STEM coordinator and APs. So that's one piece. Another piece that we have is that we've brought innovative programs to our district despite not having really any different, no overall increase in our budget for almost a decade. So we've tried to bring in programs like the dual-language immersion program, the only suburban district in the state that has a program like this with the hopes of giving our children the very best education, but also attracting students from all over the state to move here and to come to our schools and to really get into that charter school, elementary, and parochial private school, elementary market group. And we have. So we've surveyed parents who have said we moved here because of DLI and we lived here already and would have sent our children to charter schools or private schools in order to get that extra something. So that's one of our examples. We have a wonderful STEM program, K through 12. We invested many years ago in a STEM coordinator. We have a GemsNet science program for our elementary through middle school students that has continued to be flourished. We moved to a one-to-one laptop device and brought in a lot of engineering and coding programs for our kids. And we, at a couple of school committee meetings ago, you saw myself and the CFO and the high school principal saying that we should have gotten degrees in communication and advertising because some other districts have folks that they've employed. We're it. But our school committee has supported us recently and brought online at the last school committee meeting a marketing subcommittee of the school committee to bring in and tap into talent in our parent community of folks in advertising and communications to be able to get the word out to market ourselves better than we've been able to do on our own.
Have the efforts improved the percentage of students coming from outside districts?
Yes, not at the career and technical center yet. We know that we've kept students. DLI students, we know that they've come. We have looked, we have an entrance exit survey. Parents have not put on that survey that they've come for STEM, but we believe that they've stayed because we've moved from more play-based, inquiry-based, project-based learning and personal learning than we had been several years ago.
Kristin, I would imagine that you have already identified the areas in which you would like to cut.
I would like to cut nothing.
Best-case scenario with a 4% personal, sorry, property tax transfer, the school budget is operating on more than a $2.2 million deficit. Can you help identify to us which areas you've targeted that you will be making cuts?
Fortunately, not tonight. I won't be able to. That's a conversation that I first have with the school committee, and our first conversation will be in January on that. But this morning, for a half a day, the administrators really dug into what areas we are able to cut.
Okay, thank you. Yet to be determined, I guess.
Yet to be determined, and it's their choice. So we present options for consideration. None of them are pretty. I'll tell you that right now. They're difficult.
So in terms of these pages on the slides that you've presented here, items eligible for consideration, that's just kind of lengthy list in which you're going to go through the different costs and speak to the school committee, and essentially they'll make the decision based on what's, whatever they decide, I guess, and direct you.
Yes, so what happens is they've typically not said, you know, give us everything. That's too much in three meetings to go through. They've typically said, and I believe the last meeting, they asked for a prioritized list of cuts, so we'll give them, depending upon what the conversation they have with you in terms of the property tax transfer, we will give them a smaller consolidation, but they can go off-grid and pick from anything on the menu. That's their, they're the policymaking body. And so we make recommendations, and they can change those recommendations.
Just to make it clear, I think it would be valid for all of us to kind of have an understanding as to different targeted areas, although I know you're not going to let us know at this time. I think it would help us in making our decision as to which percentage increase we would choose, if any. So I just want to make that known.
Okay, so with your permission, do you want me to go into some of the areas?
I mean, I think the majority of the school committee, right, were fairly new to this process, and we're experiencing it for the first time as well. But I would prefer that we have a chance, because we haven't had a chance yet, to look at the line item projections or recommendations for cuts. And thinking about the town charter and what's sort of our role and what's your role, I think it would be helpful for us to first have a conversation before we bring that to you all as to what specifically we're behind cutting, if that makes sense?
Following our initial discussion at the previous meeting as well, we dug in and asked some follow-up questions to get a little bit more data on also what some of the best practices we're seeing at other districts in Rhode Island as far as the percentage of money in the bucket that's going to administrators versus teachers and just try to get an understanding a little bit deeper into what comprises each line item. So I'm not sure that we have like the full digestion of the deeper dive of the data yet, so I don't know.
And I just wanted to, I wanted to add one more thing because I think you mentioned this, which is whether it's a 0% property tax transfer or a 4% property tax transfer. Right now, as Dr. Stringfellow mentioned, we're requesting the town council consider a 2.5% property tax transfer. Whatever those are, we're talking about major cuts either way, right? And so even at 2.5% property tax transfer, we're going to have to sort through $3 million in cuts, right? So it's just a lot that we still have to understand.
I just want to add one comment to that because you mentioned you guys are going to be looking at percentages of other similar school districts for best practice. If you're going to do that, then I would also recommend looking at what they're spending per people to use that data as well.
And Councilman, I would point out that, again, we have some baked-in numbers here that sort of drive us toward particular types of cuts. The school districts' contractual obligations, the increase in expenditures there, if I'm not mistaken, are $1.2 million in contractual obligations, as I remember. Yeah, 1.2, 1.5. And we're at, on the municipal side because of contractual obligations, 1.2. So right there, we're already up against our 4% cap. Again, remember, this is not a cap on the transfer to the schools. It's a cap on what we can tax. We cannot levy a tax that's more than 4% of what we levied last year. So their 1.1, our 1.2, 1.5 actually, I think it is, their 1.5, our 1.2 is 2.7, our 4% cap is 2.9. So with no cuts, with no change in policy, no increase in any sort, we're already at 2.7.
So Rob, what you're saying is technically we could transfer more than four, but we would have to then find that savings on the other side of our budget.
So again, the cap, the 4% cap is not, does not speak to how the municipality allocates funds within the municipality.
Just how much we can increase our taxes.
That's correct. Now, where you would find more than that is beyond me at this point. I mean, frankly, you'd be, if you were trying to go above a 4% in an environment like this, you'd be cutting the senior center.
Right. Again, I wasn't mentioning that to go above four.
No, I understand.
I was just mentioning that other services would then suffer.
Oh, absolutely. And they suffer. I mean, that's the trade-off we've got all the time. You know, if you do 2.5 to the schools as opposed to 2, that means less roads get paved. That means there are fewer programs somewhere. That is the trade-off. I mean, that's the challenge we face here. It's not an easy set of problems. And I would add to that, because we're constrained in this way on an annual basis, we don't have the liberty, we don't have the freedom to do the things we really need to get off this treadmill. We're spinning our wheels. We're doing this year in and year out for multiple years now. We're not able to sort of step back and start building the programs that we need for the community.
And then even some of the things that we've been talking about in terms of facilities...
I've got my list as well. I mean, you know, things like actually starting to take on the tree problem that we've got here in South Kingstown, actually having a fund to make traffic safety improvements and improve pedestrian safety. There's a long, long list of things that we need to do, and we just don't have the luxury of sort of... And that, by the way, the fact that we are stuck with that is why this has to be done over time. That's why we have to think about incremental solutions, which is why something like, even though it's not going to yield an immediate result, looking for consolidation of resources or programs consolidating administrative systems is worth looking at because the treadmill we're on just isn't, it doesn't lead anywhere. This isn't going to be a good path for us to stay on. If we're going to build our way out of it, we're going to look like the rest of the Eastern seaboard. If we're not going to build our way out of it, then we really need to be smart. We have to figure out the cuts in a way that frankly, very few communities have even tried to do it.
So to that point, Rob, and this question may be from Marianne. Do we typically do a...
Do we typically do a three- to five-year look, projection? It seems that we're at this table every year with the same challenges. And I just wonder if a longer-term look would help to sort of get some of these ideas, you know, closer to reality.
I think in some areas that would be good, but in other areas, it just is not possible because of what's happening with the staffing, or what happens with state aid, or the decline in Roman, or what has happened with voc ed. I mean, I have voc ed numbers that go back 10 years, and those numbers were rarely exactly what we budgeted. Did I ever anticipate something like this? No. So it depends. It depends on what we're looking at. State aid, until that levels off at some point in time, it makes it very difficult.
Right. Yeah, I understand that. I guess my, my point is that, so typically in my business, when you, when you see a retracting economy, you can't just budget for 12 months. You have to do a three- to five-year forward look. And it typically is not that accurate, but it's very helpful.
I'll just say, we do do that in capital, and we do the six-year, like you folks.
Right. But in operational, we do it as well. And again, it isn't always that accurate, but it's always very helpful.
Mary Ann, just a thought I just had about forecasting. You know, we spent a lot of time on the facility study with demographic data that we've, we have in hand, but then I started thinking about the, the children that are going to other schools as an example, right? Does that happen generally in the middle of the, I mean, in the beginning of the year, end of the year, middle of the year? Have you seen any new trends happening?
What we've seen is the trends, it's mostly at the end of the year. That parents make the decisions for a number of reasons. Some of them very personal reasons, as they relate to high, specifically high schools. Parents make choices for very personal reasons. Sometimes we've also seen at the middle school level, or when they're going to Curtis Corner or Broad Rock, usually they're very personal reasons for what they're making those changes for.
The charter school lottery is usually March 1st, and we learned, when you, in the fall, you'll start hearing private schools put on their open houses, and they do testing sometimes for students for admittance into their programs. So probably four or five years ago, we started doing a similar open house that had never been done before, in order to capture students within that same timeframe. We find that parents are making the decision the spring before the ensuing school year. Some parents, though, are literally, keep their children on our roster even through the first month of school. And so we're paying, we were planning for them in the classroom, they're included in our numbers, and sometimes that pushes us to add another section, but they're, they've been at the charter school, and they're staying at the charter school. We've also had the opposite, which is we get a bill from the charter school, and the charter school is permitted by law to bill us if a child was on their roster as of August 1st. And so a piece of our, our communication efforts have been communicating to parents of very young children that if you, if you're in both places, we're going to get billed in both places in the beginning of the year. And it takes us a month or two to, to sort of work that out with the charter schools. But for the first quarter, if they're on their roster come August, then we're, we're getting a tuition bill, even if the children are sitting at Peastale or Wakefield.
So that being said, one of the things that's not in here is, I know there's going to be a subcommittee of the school committee for the marketing, but marketing takes dollars, and you're probably going to have to put that in your budget sometime sooner than later. I can tell you that, from my own personal experience, the other schools like Charahoe, they mail stuff to my house constantly, as an example. So they're being more proactive than we have in the past regarding that.
Could, what is the current year budget? If you don't mind me asking. I'm trying to get a rough estimate of what we're paying per FTE. That way maybe we can get a rough estimate of how many FTEs we might need to cut based on the amount of dollars that we're looking at each of these scenarios.
Are you talking total budget or the property tax transfer?
Total budget.
Total budget, $61,201,572. $61,201, if you want to go with the round number.
Remember that, that.
It's not going to be.
It's not going to be pretty, but it pushes up against contractual limitations. And so at the kindergarten level, let's just say their class size is 23, with a kindergarten over 20, automatically you have a teacher and a full-time teacher assistant. At the high school, some of our wonderful career programs, like carpentry, it's a maximum for safety of 16 students. And so it, we have some constraints, but I understand the.
Right. Yeah, I'm just trying to, you know, Rory was asking a question about where cuts might come from. I don't think we can get that information tonight, but it looks like we spend about $126,000 per FTE in the district if we're looking at cuts at a 0% PTT of 4.4 million.
April, was that based off of the 60 million?
This is the total school budget.
Right. But part of that isn't, yeah, but part of that isn't employees, I believe, right?
Sure. Right. And that, but that money related to the employees who are using the money to implement programs. So that would be about 35 employees at 0% transfer, or about half of that, of course, for the 4%. So that's, I don't know if that gives you a better idea, Rory, about what we're looking at, but 0%, 35 potential employees lost, 4%, 17 and 1/2.
So Kristin, the overall budget, what is it, 78% or something like that, that is salary and benefits?
Sort of 80, but hold on for a minute. Mary Ann's doing the math.
So I guess if you're looking at employees, I would take the overall budget of 60 million to whatever 78% of that is, and then figure out the cost per FTE, doing it that way, maybe.
Thirty-five.
Right. That's what I was trying to point out.
That's true.
Right.
All right. Any other comments up at the table? Then at this point, we'll open the floor to public comment. Please try to keep it addressed to the discussion at hand. You've heard that the school committee is asking for a 2.5% property tax transfer. Tell us if you like that number, if you want it higher, less, perhaps the reasons why you might want those figures. Thank you. Please also state your name and where you're from, for the record.
Hi, I'm Rae Simocher. I'm from South Kingston. I would like to give you all some town and school district history as you embark on the budget process for 2019. In 2009, the school committee, faced with budget cuts far less severe than is what is before you today, began discussing the possibility of closing an elementary school. The enrollment, which was 1458 students K to 5, had been steadily declining, and it was becoming harder and harder to find ways to cut the budget. With a new funding formula in place that decreased state revenue by over $1 million that year, and a new cap on the property tax transfer, the school committee at the time thought that closing an elementary school would have the least impact on the district as a whole. The community pushed back, and I personally pushed back hard. As most of you know, I ran for school committee, and I won. In the spring of 2010, we had contract negotiations with our teachers, which unfortunately resulted in a 0% raise and going from 0% to a 20% copay. This was an eye-opening experience for me, and I realized that it isn't just a matter of keeping a school open, that in order to do that, we would have to make a huge sacrifice in another area, our teachers. The years went on, and enrollment continued to decline as predicted. I watched further sacrifices to the entire district, the sharing of librarians, art teachers, music, phys ed, mental health staff, and deep cuts in other areas across the district. I realized that we were spreading our resources across buildings we likely no longer needed. The town council had been concerned about district facilities for years, and it came to a head during the budget discussion of 2016. In order to get the property tax transfer we were asking for, they demanded we take a hard look at facilities use. At the January 11th, 2017, joint capital improvement meeting in town council chambers, a scope of services was decided in favor of a necessity study, a probable cost and time schedule, and a full-year delay of capital facility improvements. The study was intended to explore what education will look like with South Kingston's declining enrollment for the next 10 to 20 years, so the school committee will know where to invest their dollars. In the minutes of that meeting, it reads that the simple statement that we are going to close Curtis Corner Middle School, and it's going to solve all of the problems, is incorrect. Part of the study needs to look at the number of classrooms that have, these are in the minutes, that have student-teacher ratios of 16 and 17 today and will continue to decline. It is the entire system that needs to be evaluated. In 2018, we have classes of 12 and 13 students. I can assure you that this cannot be solved by simply redistricting. I have lived through a town-wide redistricting and know that in order to keep balanced class sizes that are reasonable, we would now have to redistrict every few years. After this January 11th meeting, the school district sent out an RFP, Master Education and Facilities Plan, K to 12, entire district, per Rhode Island General Law 42265A7, in order to elicit RFPs. We received three from interested consultants. On April 4th, 2017, the school committee and town council held joint interviews with Prismatic, RGB, and Sims, Manny, and McKee. In the only time in my tenure on the school committee, the town council and school committee then convened an executive session to discuss and hire the firm. It was a true collaborative effort. We then embarked on an 18-month process with dozens of meetings that involved hundreds of stakeholders. Our enrollment K to 5 today is 1246, a loss of 212 students and falling. As you know, after extensive input from the community, including months of meetings after the options were presented, the previous school committee voted on option B, which brings fifth grade back to the elementary schools, closes Curtis Corner Middle School, and houses 678 at Broad Rock, and closes Wakefield Elementary. With all of the information at hand and years of experience with the district, I voted on what I felt was the only path forward. We now obviously have a new school committee at the helm. I ask you to think long and hard about what will be sacrificed by keeping four elementary schools, and I wish you the best in what is sure to be a difficult budget season. Thank you in advance for your hard work and for long nights ahead.
Either Kristin or Mary Ann, where are we right now with the number of students at the University of Rhode Island in our school system?
Typically, we have a large, a large percentage of our high school seniors do attend URI because of the proximity and parents working there. I would be guessing, Jim, so if I could email that to you, I can get in touch with, or I can, if our director of guidance is watching on the Now Clerk base that might be live streamed.
Okay.
Might be able to shoot it to you later. But I would say probably, I would, I'm going to go with a half, but that would be a guess. So probably about, maybe 100 kids.
I didn't, I was really thinking of, of the number of their graduate students and their families and their children that attend our schools.
Oh.
During my tenure, we averaged between 10 and 25, and was always tax-free on the basis of the economics that the university offered us, so we never charged the state or the University of Rhode Island for them, but anyway, they're thinking about this.
Yeah, we don't have a full loss that's going in to pick up in the Graduate Village right now, but we can get that number to you as well.
I appreciate it.
Do you want the high school seniors that go?
No, thanks. And I know you and I have always worried about the pre-K numbers. I read in your pro forma, the number 50. That's the lowest I've ever seen, and I think you've seen since you've been here. That's amazing. Is that birth rate decline, or have parents found other schools to send?
I think a piece of it is birth rate decline, but the biggest piece that folks have to remember, that our preschool is not a, just general education preschool, it's based on special education students first, and then bringing in peer models as community students. So that's how they develop the programs, and there have been less students who, who need special education, three-to-five-year-old support, coming in, therefore, less community students.
Okay. Just a couple of things. I won't bore you with history, but in your pro forma here, you, you didn't go back to where the problem really ensued, and that was when we opened Broad Rock School back in 2000, 2001. If you remember, the editorials in the local newspapers called it a white elephant. Why are we keeping this open? We've already had two years of school population declines, and NESDEC, who's been right on the money for 20 years, I have to tell you, those folks have been phenomenal, predicted increasing declines of enrollment. So it was a real question why to open it. And when I give you this number, you'll understand why. In the very first year, we had a $5 million transfer, property tax transfer, $5 million, 15%. For the first eight years of Broad Rock open, we averaged almost 6.75% average, more than double inflation. So now this might give you an idea why we're so much in trouble here. The school funding formula, and I've got the Equity Act here, and believe me, you need a, need a PhD to figure this baby out. But yes, one of the major M, total average daily membership of pupils in the state and against all those seated in your community, an incredible formula. In 2008, 2009, we got the highest state aid return from our taxpayers, $10.6 million, just to round it out for you. Kristin's now telling us we're looking at $5.5 million this year, all because, as Deborah Gess came down here and said, "You guys are spending money like there's no tomorrow." We kept classrooms open, schools open, you name it. The taxpayers had no idea what's going on here, but think about that for a minute. Taxpayers here in this community are sending, just this year alone, $5 million less than our own tax money we got back in 2008. And you're also asking for 2.5%, 3%, $2 million, $3 million. Think about that. That's like a $7 to $8 million tax increase, basically because we didn't manage facilities, and because Broad Rock, because that huge investment in Broad Rock, when the roof fell off out from underneath us on school population, that combination was a massacre. We have not recovered from that. And I wish everyone would, would take a look at those numbers. And if you add up the money lost from 2008, '09 to the current year, that's $18 million for eight years, roughly a half million dollars a year, add it all up. for eight years, roughly a half million dollars a year, add it all up. Robert Hicks, the superintendent, in '08, '09, said if we close Curtis Corner, we're looking at saving $630,000 a year, times eight years, another $5 million. That's 5 and 18, 23 million. Now we have the current 19, 20. We're expecting another $5.5 million from what we got, from what our taxpayers gave away years ago. We're now, you know, we're going to be closing in on $30 million here because of facility management issues. So I'll end on that, but the one thing we need to do is I think we should bargain with RIDE, have our reps, our senators, everybody else go up there. I think if you signed a contract right now for that improvement of Broad Rock, whatever the monies have to be, to expand that school, to close Curtis Corner, say we've learned our lessons and plead with them to maybe take this state aid education back to a $7.5 million level instead of this new $5.5 million level, we wouldn't be here tonight having this problem. It's a self-made problem.
I appreciate the applause, but we're all public officials up here. We don't need to hear it, honestly. And I don't think people are going to the podium to get applause. I think they're trying to just inform the process. So, you know, try to keep it moving. I know there's going to be a lot of speakers tonight. If you know you're going to speak, you can queue up. Thank you.
Hi. Ooh, loud. Nicole Milanefi from South Kingstown. I'm a parent who am staying here because of the STEM program, so I thank the school district for maintaining that and continuing to prove it. And I do want to see us continue to support our schools. However, I have concerns in the current decisions that have happened over the last few weeks because I saw a plan in place that was going to stop us from having to come here every year and beg for several million dollars of property tax transfer to try to make up that difference. And I saw that the consolidation of the elementary school was going to help with that as well as the consolidation at the middle school as well. And I hope that if there's some way that if you're to give, because right now we're in a situation where we can't do anything but we can continue our plan forward. But I think that that money, if you provide that to us, that it has a stipulation attached to it, that there are planned reductions, that every year, I think, as you mentioned, Joe, that you look out three to five years in advance and we see what that decrease is going to be and that we continue following that, that we have procedures and steps that are made so that we can see that decrease. And during the whole facility, you know, 18 months that we've been going through here, there's one statement that resonated with me from Roger Hendricks, who was the consultant who provided the ad specs that we've seen. And when it was asked of him about all the options that were put up there, Option A through Option D, the question was, "Why was Option A on there?" And his response was that the community really spoke that it liked its community schools, but his, this is from an email from him, he says, "Leaving all four schools is a viable option depending on how much the school committee is willing to sacrifice to do so. In the future, the sacrifice may have seemed excessive, especially if you spent money on upgrading the building." And so my concern is, I don't want to see cuts to our programs. I don't want to see us lose out on improving our high school. We already are seeing over a million dollars loss of students that are migrating to other high schools because they have better facilities to provide. We need to continue investing in ECTs so that we can bring students and keep students here, but we also have to find ways to decrease our operating budgets. So I see that the plan that we had moving forward was going to give us that and I'm concerned that now we're not going to be able to have that.
Monique Chardier, Wakefield. I wanted to bring some sort of big picture items to the attention of this town council and the school committee. Property taxes in Rhode Island are in the top 20% nationally. I bring this up because school budgets take an inordinate share of that money. I understand that since 2000, student enrollment in South Kingstown schools has dropped over 30%. I suppose it would be too much to wish for property taxes to fall correspondingly. Minimally, however, I would think that level funding along the way would have been a reasonable thing to ask for. In the interest of continuing to try and keep our property taxes under control, I would certainly urge level funding to the school budget. Thank you very much.
Mike Namias. I'd also like to mention the situation between the school enrollment dropping and the taxes increasing, even though the FTEs have been held in a ratio, something's still out of whack because over the past six years, enrollments dropped 8.5% and yet taxes have risen over 13. So that's a problem. Secondly, social security payments have only increased an average of 1.4% per year in that period. So as taxes rise, seniors are being squeezed and everyone has less disposable income to spend at the town's businesses. Lastly, I'd just like to remind everyone that there was a commitment from RIDE based on consolidation to provide some funding from the statewide bond issue. As I understand it, there's only 40 working days to choose a new consolidation plan, propose it to the state as a better alternative, or students will lose out and so will taxpayers because then you'll come back and say, "Oh, we didn't get any bond money. Now we need XYZ to fill in the gap because we were late or we changed our mind," or I don't know. I'm not sure what the right answer is, but I'd encourage you to focus on the next 40 days and try to get some of that money.
Roland Benjamin, South Kingstown. We talk about this every year, a 2% raise, whether it's a 2% or a 4% increase in revenue from the town is the appropriate range. And I want to describe the alternative range, which is a maintenance of effort to maximum tax cap, and we're losing 2%, so in theory, we could reduce our revenue by 2%. So that's really a 6% window. And anybody that's ever had to make payroll without knowing next week's receipts can really appreciate this. We're talking about knowing our revenue for the next 18 months. These really aren't as difficult discussions as we make them out to be. So if we keep putting pressure on the taxpayer, we keep putting pressure on the community, Rob describes it well, we're creating the conditions for something more severe to occur, something like a $3.5 million cut or a $10 million cut from the real spending, not a cut from the projected spending. So can we manage that? Can we manage $3.5 million less? Cherahoe's doing it with 250 more kids. Could we manage our district with $5 or $10 million less? Ducksbury, Massachusetts, Wilbraham, Massachusetts, both doing that. How about $15 million less? Long Meadow and Holliston, Mass. In fact, every district in Massachusetts comparable inside to us is doing it for less than us. And many of them are outperforming us on multiple measures. Forget about Ridecast, but other measurements like college admissions analysis. In other words, it's not the kids benefiting from the extra spending that we have on our district. So we hear we can't control certain spending, and that's true if you're only looking at this with a single-year horizon, that was a good discussion about looking at 10 years out. But if we set a goal, as Rob described, like level spending until enrollment flattens out 10 years from now, then we can manage our objectives accordingly. But we need to take that first step. And from the inside, when I was at that side of the table, I know how we might have managed it. We have to make some difficult decisions, we have to do them in a unified and collaborative way. Even just looking at 2.5% increase per year with our expected enrollment pushes our per pupil cost in eight years to over $30,000. That's unsustainable. We need tighter guardrails today to ensure the things that we can't control today in this budget cycle will be influenced when the time comes around where we can control them. Now, I'm concerned, I've been to several school committee meetings in the last couple weeks, we've seen a committee that has shown very little trust and confidence in the administration. At this point in time, I approached, at this point in time last year, I approached last year's budget with a little bit of a different trust-but-verify approach. We, one week before we presented the budget to the town council, we had worked out a 0.4% increase in spend and had a balance sheet option had you chosen, the town council, to tighten our constraints. In fact, whatever you decided, I knew I'd be able to manage that, and I said it as much, I've said it on two budget cycles. If we can't handle a level-funded budget even once, we can't achieve the 10-year goal of reconciling our spending to our enrollment decline. And how can we manage to expect the largest capital project that we do as a town if we keep this kind of hostile environment with our committee and district? And I urge you to consider tight constraints on this year's budget.
Don't make me use the gal. Please come forward.
My name's Josh Daly. I live here in town, obviously, have a daughter in the schools and two more coming up. So obviously, this is a very difficult budget to look at, perspective situation to look at. I got up at the first school committee meeting with the new school committee when the facilities was raised as the issue and community comment was there. And I'm going to reiterate some things that I said then because I think they continue to apply right now, which is, how can we comment when we don't know what the plan is? This budget, as has been said, is a process and a plan, and it's a public process and a public plan, and so we need to have an idea of where we're going with this. And it's surprising to me, I thought Mr. MacIntyre's question was really fair to ask, but I think to ask the school committee, where are we going with this budget? What are the priorities? When did you get the line item budget? How are you coming to a meeting and saying, "We need 2.5%," but you can't say what it's for? I think we need a plan going forward and we need a public plan where people can see what's being considered. I think that's important. I think that's something that the town council should be asking for. If they're going to ask you for whatever property tax transfer they're going to ask you for, what's the plan?
To be clear, we'll have many meetings to come where we'll be discussing that, certainly.
Hi, my name's Deb Burkner. I live in Mattoonik. So today in my email, J.C. Northrup from the school committee sent an email that she had received from Tracy Donnelly. She works with RGB. In the email, she assured us that RGB would complete the facility's Stage 2 application on time. And I feel this email represents the concern in our community. We are not concerned that the application will not be submitted on time. We are concerned that it will not be accepted by RIDE. It is RGB's job to complete the application on time. It is the school committee's job to make sure that that application is strong and has the best chance of being accepted. And for the town council, it is your job to verify the quality of their work. It seems from this communication and the fact that the school committee has not had a building committee meeting in over two months, that you are simply trusting RGB to make this significant change to the application and you're just going to accept whatever work they provide. The community has received no answers to some very important questions. Are the plans for the other elementary schools being cut by $11 million as Option A states? Or is Wakefield simply added to the current plan at increased cost? How are you planning to justify the underutilization caused by keeping Wakefield open? Why have there been no work sessions or other public forum discussions since your election? This is an unacceptable level of oversight. If this is how you plan to oversee this project in particular and the school district budget in general, then it is best for this community if we just simply stop the facility plan now before we waste taxpayer money. In relation to today's budget discussion, I'm uncomfortable providing any additional funds to be managed in this way. The taxpayers expect sensible, efficient government, and we are very concerned that this school committee is unable to override it.
Good evening. My name's Steve Sharkey. I'm a resident of Wakefield for the last 16 years, put three kids through college. Four of my kids live out of state because of jobs. I'm trying to get them back, trying to show them that there's good living down here if you can get jobs. Unfortunately, I think we're all headed this way. The orange vest, the green vest, as you can, if you don't watch the news, in France, they're rioting because of taxes. I'm considering, what am I going to do when I retire? And can I afford to stay in the state or do I have to go south? It's very important that there be an open communication dialogue between the school committee and the town council. I came here tonight after reading in The Independent about all the acrimonious and challenges that the incoming school committee is now facing. Originally, I thought, well, they got rid of an overpriced lawyer, but then again, I'm thinking about, did they go through a source selection process that was open and kind? Yet tonight, I hear about your hiring practices, that you get the best teacher, the highest staff. Well, why don't you go for best value? If you get a kid coming out of college with a 3.5 GPA out of our known colleges in the area, hire him. Take that chance. There's a diamond in the rough. Take a look at everything that has ever been produced before in terms of a board or commission to show you savings. Don't hire new people. Take a look at what you got and use it to drive the cost of education down. My understanding, the cost per pupil is high, there's all kinds of associated costs, whether it be on the labor side, maybe you have to incentivize for early retirees, and then shift to hiring younger people to come in. From a town's perspective, what type of person you want to get? I would think you would want to get older people because maybe we're less burden on the system when we pay taxes. At the other side, you've got to have young people come in because young people invigorate the community. This is a balance between what the town council has to do and the planning board and what the school committee's got to go shoot for and what your desires are to provide a valued education. I'm looking at it as a taxpayer. I don't want my taxes to increase. I'm looking for you guys to find efficiencies, whether it be on labor, whether it be on education and training, whether it be on the use and introduction of electronic media in the schools, whether you use mentor programs, that maybe you don't have to get qualified teachers, but you can use a qualified teachers and to, as you come up through college, student teachers, use those different combinations, but find some solutions that everybody can agree upon. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Hi, Emily Totten. So it's more of a clarifying question for one of your slides. It was, you said that with the, I think it was the interest of the bonds that we're asking for for the renovations, we're already at a 2% transfer to the schools? And so if you're saying a 2.5%, is that then only a 0.5% or, do you know what I mean, in addition to the 2% that's already coming?
So yeah, what I, the piece that I'm trying to explain is this. We know that we have a $1.5 million contractual obligation on the school side that is above and beyond what they spent this year. I know that I've got a $1.2 million contractual obligation on the town side that is above and beyond what we spent this year. And we know, based on the application, the Stage 1 application submitted to RIDE, that we're going to have to build to a debt load. And to do that, we've got to put $500,000 aside in this coming year. Those numbers combined exceed our $2.9 million cap.
Got it.
Well, I'd like to thank everybody for... Well, I'd like to thank everybody for...
Good evening. My name is Doral Beasley. So, my family moved here when I was eight, so that's like 63 years ago. And I'm afraid that our, I think South Kingstown is a dying, a dying community. And it's dying because we cannot attract adults of childbearing age to come here and live. Now, why is that? In 1970, there was a panic, a panic took place in South Kingstown. The panic was that in 1950, the number of people in town was 10,000. In 1970, it was like 16,000 or 17,000. Growth during that period was like 40-some percent. So, over that period of time, the people were panicking, including the town council starting around 1975, that we were going to grow ourselves out, we're going to become a town of 100,000 people. So, what they decided to do was to change our zoning laws. We changed our zoning laws totally, much larger parcels of property. I think, I know if we ever got to 10-acre, but I know we got to 2-acre zoning. And in 1983, on top of that, the South Kingstown Land Trust was created. Now, the South Kingstown Lands Trust, its original charge was, I think, to protect lands that were protecting aquifers, like, so water sources, ground, you know, drinking water sources in South Kingstown, and wildlife ravaged areas where wildlife were living, that kind of thing. But over time, the land trust, with the aid of the South Kingstown Town Councils, years and years of them, so the South Kingstown Town Council has given money to the land trust to purchase property. So, amongst those properties, as time went on, were large, large swaths of farmland, a lot of it done in the Mattoonick, Mattoonick-Green Hill area. So, what that's all done, by taking, changing our zoning so that we have larger lots, makes it harder for subdivisions, and then you have land taken out of play. What we didn't do in the 40 years since 1975 is that we, as a town, and the town councils, and the town management people, you didn't keep monitoring what, in fact, that was doing to the demographics of the town. Now, it's taken 40 years, but the biggest problem in getting somebody of, you know, childbearing age to come to South Kingstown is they can't afford a piece of property. When my wife and I built our house 40 years ago, 41 years ago, in Kingston, we bought our piece of property from the Kingston Fire District, some land they were selling. We bought it for $7,200. Now, today, that piece of property is, and by the, you know, the town tax thing, is like $120,000. So, the property, that's like 15 times what we paid for it. But if we, but the house, the money we paid to build our house is only going up like five or six times. So, all over town, you've had the price of land going skyrocketing. So, what that, in fact, did over the last 20 years is you have our subdivisions, most of the subdivisions that have been built are giant houses because if you can, so a developer is going to say, "Oh, how do I maximize my profits by building bigger houses?" Now, this past, this past Halloween in November...
Pardon me, Mr. Beasley. Thank you. I appreciate everything you always come to offer us. If you can bring it back to the conversation...
It's getting there. So, on Halloween this year, at 271 Biscuit City Road, that's where I live, we had zero kids. All right? So, that's the first time ever, in 42 years, we had zero kids. And I walked through Teptil last fall, I ran into a lady, not physically, but, you know, on the sidewalk, and I said, "What's it like in your area for Halloween?" And she goes, "Oh, yeah, we used to have 80 kids in the Halloween, luckily, we have 12." So, so what other towns have done, like East Greenwich, they now have four, six, and seven thousand dollars, four, six, and seven thousand square foot lots. They've, in their town, they have areas where somebody can afford a small lot and put a small house on it. We need to find a way to make that happen here. And if we don't, we're going to become the St. Petersburg of Rhode Island, where we're going to have older people like myself.
Thank you. I think I can speak for all the town council members up here in saying that affordability and affordable housing are certainly one of the priorities that we're going to be focusing on in the coming term. As Rob was talking about goals, we're going to be having a workshop, sitting down with the planning board and other advisory board members to discuss, I think, that issue in particular. I hope people will come and be a part of that conversation as well as it moves forward. There is a lot that we can do. Certainly, we're going to have to revisit some of the zoning decisions that have been made over the years. And, you know, land preservation is certainly something that's important to the community, but it's also important that we're making investments that make it more affordable for people to live here. You know, I think we've heard a lot of stark discussion tonight about the financial position. I mean, the town's financial position continues to remain strong. I think we should take some heart there. But we are faced with a lot of challenges when it comes to the way we're being remunerated by the state for our schools, and it's going to be a difficult process over the coming months as we work through an operating budget, not just for the schools but for the town as well. If there's no other final public comment, I entertain a motion to adjourn at this point.
Did you maybe want to give us some direction about where we should? That would be super helpful so that we could...
That's right.
Thank you.
Well...
Was that a heart attack?
So, among the council members here, we've been asked about 2.5% as, you know, a request. I wonder where you all stand.
After, you know, listening to Rob today, especially with the fact that we talked about some pretty significant, not scary numbers, but numbers we can deal with if we make the right decisions, with the 1.5 in contractual on the school's side, 1.2 contractual on the town's side for increases, and then adding in, correct me if I'm wrong, Robert, I'm not sure if I wrote it down right, but was the difference debt service?
So, again, the idea here is that we have debt service that we have to deal with today that deals with current debt, and we know we're building toward future debt. So, we need to put some money aside to make sure that we can deal, well, we have to pay what we've got to pay now, but we've got to be able to sort of smooth the transition to a higher debt load based on the debt we're going to take on to do a school project. And that number is 500,000.
Okay. You know, these are all very important decisions that we're making at this table today in giving guidance, but like everyone said, it's a process that we go through. I didn't see this until recently, unfortunately, but at the same time, I'm hearing what people are saying, but I know what's, you know, I know that our kids are important, that our teachers are important, that our community's important, education is important to our longevity as a town and as a civilization. But I don't think I could, right now, support anything over 1% of an increase on the school's side currently. I'd like to see what that looks like, but that's my personal opinion.
I think we have an obligation to look after the taxpayers and ensure that they are not seeing increasing taxes significantly over time. I'd like to see, although I'd like to see no increase here, I feel that's not right. I mean, I feel comfortable with the 1.25 to meet you guys in the middle. I think it's up to you guys to find ways to look for cuts, preferably not personnel, preferably not teachers, but looking in other ways. In my opinion, we cannot give away the store here. We need to protect the taxpayers. I'm comfortable with 1.25%.
I typically am uncomfortable giving a number during this meeting, mostly because I don't see a lot of the information until today, but I was able to gather the presentation from the other night, and I spent a lot of time with it. I think my hesitation this year, though, is that you've picked a number and admittedly haven't had time to really go through the presentation, except that one time last week when you had your December 11th meeting, I think. So, it's questionable to me how you get to the 2.5. Like, how did you arrive there if you're not, if you're not familiar with, you know, the ask, the range and the pro forma? How do you land on 2% or 2.5% without all the information and vetting it amongst yourselves? And admittedly, I think you're saying that's what you're going to do next. So, frankly, I'm a little hesitant to give any number because that hasn't been done yet. That exercise hasn't been done yet.
I just wanted to speak just quickly in response to that, Joe, is we had been asked at the previous meeting to give some sort of a direction, and clearly, we haven't had time to look through all the details, and we haven't been presented with all of the details either. And what Kristin had asked us as a committee is to give her some guidance as to what she should come to you with. And if you remember from the conversation, as a committee, it was decided that nobody felt comfortable asking the taxpayers to come up with, you know, to carry that 4%. But when looking at the significant number that would occur with a 0%, let's start somewhere in the middle, and clearly, it is a process. So, I think that's just important to remember at this time.
I agree.
It's not a, you know, we're not shooting in the dark.
No, I get that. I didn't want to imply that that's what you did.
Kristin asked from the beginning, let's go in. What do you want us to ask?
Sure, you need to come up with something.
Or you need to start with something.
But again, I think that more work needs to be done before you really can do it.
Exactly.
So, I would agree with Joe. I'm hesitant to settle on a number without more information. I can go with a gut feeling, but I, that's not why I'm here. I'm here to go with an informed decision, and I can't do that with the hour-and-a-half presentation I just digested. I need 10 and 1/2 hours to digest the rest of these numbers. I am not comfortable at all settling on a number till I, till I have a better feeling for this.
So, just to, this has been done every year for 10 years. It's not my design. It's, I'm not sure, it's probably Mr. Alfred's design, but it's a place for us to start. And so, we need to know whether we're starting between now and January 8th or 11th, whenever our first meeting is, that's when Mary Ann and her accounting staff build the budget. And so, if we build it at 2, you can still end up at 0 or 4. But it's the time that it takes to put into something and then cut off of that, we will only have one more meeting with you. And so, just to put it in context, I'm not asking you to choose a number. That was not to pressure you, just to give you the context of why, for us, given these huge numbers, it will be important to get your thinking at the moment, which will clearly change in one direction or another as we go through the process.
So, my thinking at the moment is I would like to see the leanest budget that we can find. I fully support education. I know the value of it. I have a granddaughter in second grade at Peastdale in the DLI program. She's thrilled. She loves it there. I'm happy to support education. But what I'm looking for is the leanest possible budget. I don't know that that's 2.5%. That might be 1%. That, you know, it might be 3. I don't know because we're not seeing it. So, again, I'm very uncomfortable naming a number to shoot for without additional information.
Mr. President, if I may, just on the question of the process, there's no legal requirement that this be one of two meetings. There can be more meetings if the council and the school committee so desire.
That's a good point.
Kristin, I think, I don't know if it was a couple of years ago, we had that same discussion where you kind of asked for that number. I know it's kind of what was happening, but I was brand new, and I kind of didn't really know how to answer that question. I think a lot of people also didn't feel comfortable answering it at that point. But I think we need to give you some guidance, even if it's 0%. Yeah. So, so to come up with a plan so that we can see what it looks like. I think what I've heard from a lot of people, and not that I, what I think, what I've heard from a lot of people in our community is the frustration, and it's not anyone in particular's fault, over time, feeling that money isn't being spent well or spent efficiently. And I think that's really important when you're asking folks year after year for an increase when enrollment is dropping, when we spent 18 and 1/2 months on a program that's now going to be changed potentially as well. So, personally, somewhere between 0 and 1 would be where I would feel comfortable with a number, just for planning purposes. I'm not saying that's what I'm going to agree to. But I think, like what Deb said, we want to see a lean budget. But at the same time, we all feel a sense of responsibility for our students, for our town, and for everyone that's affected by this. You know, one of the things that you notice sometimes, and I didn't do a lot of walking when I was campaigning, I did it for a few hours one day in Wakefield, you know, and I walked around, and one of the first things I noticed, maybe it's because I'm in real estate and I look at fixing the properties, is that a lot of people are letting minor things go on their houses, which tells me that they can't afford, you know, the 100, 200, or $1,000 increase in any expense. If they could, they would have painted their porch steps or had someone come in to do that. So, I understand that you need a number, and I, what I see right now is, you know, Joe and Deb feeling uncomfortable based off of the information and needing more time and feeling like the school committee needs to do a little bit more due diligence on their side in terms of coming up with a better plan in a way. And then Rory coming in at around 1%, and I'm not sure where Abel would fall, but I think that we're not anywhere near the 2.5% in terms of having a plan at that.
Any other comments from the school committee?
So, I think, you know, we've had one budget meeting where we looked at this presentation and know that we're going to have to have deep cuts across the district, and probably administrators, teachers, support staff. Even at 2.5%, we're cutting $3 million, and I think that's a beyond lean budget. So... So I understand, I think I share as a parent and a taxpayer some of the same concerns about being really thoughtful about the property tax transfer, but I just don't want to leave here without people really understanding the weight of even at a 2 and 1/2% property tax transfer, what that's going to feel like in our district, because it's $3 million. So once we get to 1, it's almost $4 million. And so I think we're really going to do the work to look at what we can actually cut with as little negative impact on students, but I don't want to, I don't want to pretend that it's not going to be severe. It's going to be severe. $3 million is a lot, $4 million is severe, in my opinion.
So I guess what I'm asking for is to see the work. You know, I think I need, Rob, you told us we could schedule more budget meetings, and I'd like to see budget meetings as we go forward, like here's, here's our plan to cut, it's going to save this much, now, now we go to this next section. I need that kind of information to be able to, to make an informed, you know, decision.
If that's the will of the council and the, and the school committee, we'll schedule it.
Right, and one other quick comment.
Yeah, so the question, it becomes one of schedule. The school committee's budget is due on the 14th of February, so are we talking a meeting before that or after that? I think before that is what I hear, I mean.
There's a joint session over the capital improvement program?
There is that.
Could we combine it with that?
Actually, I think that meeting is in March. Does anyone remember?
January 9th or something.
Is there a January 9th meeting?
Yeah. I would just suggest that we.
January 9th here, so we could certainly tack on to that.
It's, it does not leave a lot of time, but I would say.
Because I think the first school committee meeting is, I'm trying to figure if it's before or after that.
It's the 8th.
So it's the 8th. So the 8th is the first time that they're going to see the, like, the true cuts that we would be proposing, and that they would start to make some decisions around and ask for more feedback. And so just.
Even if you've shown them that, perhaps you can show us that at the January 9th meeting. You know, I don't know if they're going to say, like, this is totally unacceptable to you, but I think you're hearing that we need to see it as well.
What that has driven in the past is the opportunity for you to stray away from bottom line and into line item, just saying. Be careful with that, but we'll certainly, we work at your pleasure, and whatever the two bodies agree to, we will do. And it's important, I don't disagree with anyone at the table, that it's important to have some context, and that these numbers are the most drastic I've seen in a decade. And so whatever you two decide on, we will honor, and if you want, we just need to know from a scheduling perspective about how many meetings, how many before the February 14th, and how many after. So when are the discussions more impactful to your thinking collectively, before, when the school committee has already sort of wrapped their head around it, or planning together? If you could talk together more about that, that would be helpful to us in knowing how to schedule and plan.
I think that's part of what I was thinking about with your question earlier, Rory. Like, I think it's a really excellent question, where are these cuts coming from? And I think it's a question that I am, I am sensitive to sort of thinking about the different roles, and so if we have some time to really dive deep into projections around cuts that we can recommend, that we're recommending, and then bring that to you all later in January, I feel like that would be ideal.
I'd like to also talk to it, is we seem to not have a problem scheduling meetings. We like to schedule meetings. I would like to see more meetings on this topic, because it's, to me, the most important topic, because it's driving all our other topics. So I personally, to give you input to the chair, so you can speak to the chair, as many meetings as we can fit into our collective schedules on this topic, to me, makes the most sense, rather than talking about other, other things that we don't really have control over until we know what we're looking at, so.
Mr. President, if I may, the one thing that I would caution against, though, is a session that focuses on one side of the equation. I mean, we really do have to keep in mind, as we're going through these discussions, that every decision with regard to the school is also a decision with regard to the taxpayer and a decision with regard to the rest of municipal operations. These are not separable. They cannot be analyzed in isolation from each other.
The, one other quick thing I wanted to mention, because I keep hearing the word cuts, and I know from a school side, it's a cut. From a town side, when I look at it, I see 0% as being level. I see if we, on our side, I would see, if I said, if we said a negative 2% as a cut, but I know it's a difference of the different places that we are, on which side of the table we're on.
So one thing to keep in mind, we've focused very much tonight on the property tax levy. It's not the only source of revenue, either for the schools or for the municipality. It's important for us to focus on the property tax levy, but there are other revenue sources, and they're in the slides, and we can talk about those, you know, at length, but this is an important, it's not the whole story. It's, it's an important, huge piece of the story, but it's not the whole story. The council president's point about South Kingstown still being a financially, fiscally sound and capable community is correct. We are focused on the property tax element tonight, I think appropriately, because this is where the pressure is being felt by taxpayers, and it is a pressure point for the departments and the schools. But it's, it's not the only part of the story that we need to keep in mind.
Thank you.
So I would just like to reiterate, we don't need to have an in-depth line item discussion on January 9th, but I think you are going on January 8th to have a presentation of, I guess, what it looks like at 1%. I think we would like to at least have an executive summary of what you see there, and when we meet again on January 9th, so that we have a sense of what these cuts are going to look like, because time is going to snowball quickly once we get into the new year. And I think it's important for fellow council members to see what it's going to look like as early as possible.
Would it be a bad idea or not proper procedure if we could see it a day or two in advance of that meeting?
Yeah, you would, you would have seen it before the school committee at that point, which is probably problematic.
One thing that seemed to be a common theme is that there is concern by the council members and also by the community, which I would agree with, about creating efficiencies and making sure that money is spent wisely. And that's how I got into this arena in the first place, is that was the same concern that I had in, as a taxpayer and as a parent and now as a school committee member. I would agree that those are really important things to keep in balance. Do you have any particular areas of concern in regard to efficiencies that we could delve deeper into?
I can't say that we have any particular, for me personally, because one of the things that we kind of don't see at the council level is the fine details, I guess. We generally see more of a general overview, and I think, is it like one of the last meetings, where we might see some of the actual line items? You know, we're not, we're not educators, you know, we, I don't know what the best way to teach a child is, or how to run a school. I kind of leave that up to the school committee and to the superintendent, but at the same time, if we can get a, maybe a better idea of what the cuts would look like on your side, that would help us decide and make a more well-informed decision. Because at the same side, Rob is right, you know, every dollar that extra that we give the schools, it's less money for the town municipal side, which is a much smaller budget, which would be much more impactful on the town side because of percentages, but I, I don't know. I mean, if you.
I just, I just think that it's pretty, a broad statement, and so if there, I mean, I have ideas of where I want to look in efficiencies that I want to see, but I'm curious as to what yours are, seeing that you all had a similar concern. So I mean, there must be some ideas of where you may want us to look.
For me, I would say the pro formas are five line items. In terms of improving the process for us giving you an amount to work with going forward, I think it makes more sense to be as detailed as possible. I work with financial statements, I understand what goes into them. For me, to kind of look at something so broadly and vaguely like this and make a decision on it, it's tough to do. I mean, I came to the 1.25 to meet in the middle, but that's what I think in terms of improving the process and the efficiencies there.
I have a, just a quick question. So each one of you basically kind of tried to give us like a ballpark figure, given some very ballpark information. So my concern, though, is that if we go to the table and we make some very painful, aggressive cuts to hit this 1% number, which is almost 3.9 million, I would be really shocked if we came to you with that amount of cuts and then you said, okay, well, good job, now we'll give you the 2 and 1/2% because you did that. So I, you know, I kind of hesitate to go, go back at this aggressive number with the understanding that that might not be your number. So I, I don't know, I kind of wish we had not opened the can of worms to begin with. And I'm wondering if the best thing to do is to really just look at what's best for the learning outcomes, take the numbers out of our heads, look at what rationally is the best route for efficiency gains, where we can share resources, where we can share administrative roles. Start there instead of look at the number, which we don't really have enough information to support that target to begin with. So that's my feeling, is I kind of want to, like, rewind and not hear any of this, and just look at it from an operational standpoint of like, what's going to result in the best-operated schools, the happiest children, in the best-sized classes, look for operational efficiencies, just like we would a business, and go from there. And then just know that there's going to be a lot of communication, it's going to be a good, open dialogue. That's my feeling.
So I had something else to say, but my question is, so do you want to erase what we said and go forward? Because I have something different to say about that, but.
We can't erase what's said in the pro forma, but I guess.
I meant our comments.
Oh, your comments.
I thought that's what you wanted to rewind.
Yeah, that's kind of what I want to rewind, is us just asking for that admittedly feeling uninformed and feeling like you're hesitating to throw a number. So if you're hesitating, then I'd really rather just look at this and try to make really good judgment calls, knowing what our administrators know about every single school inside and out, and just make good choices.
I'll have two things to say. One is, I think, I won't speak for you, but I think what Rory's saying is there's not enough detail. I think what Deb's saying is she just got it. So that's their hesitation, I'm going to guess. This has happened before, and I don't remember if it was last year or the year before. Well, I'm actually going to go to the end of her scenario, where she says, you're not likely to come back. So this has happened before, where there's been a feeling for 1 to 1 and 1/2%, and then three counselors were willing to give the ask. So it isn't automatic that we're going to say 0 and then never go near 2.
It was, it was actually last year.
I think it was last.
What we did is exactly what you're saying.
And you wound up with the biggest increase in years.
We did. We sat, we sat, we sat down, we said, what is the best way, what are, what is the best way to roll through this, and what do we need? Not what do we want, but what do we need, and what do our, what do our, what does our community need?
Right.
Which is, we ultimately ended up adding a couple of roles to it, and we got more than we had anticipated, so.
More than you would ask for in the beginning. My observation, the way you got there, is when the public saw the cuts, there was movement.
I also think, though, that we're kind of in a different place from last year, because last year, I think we were starting the study or in the middle of the study, and like Kristin said, this is probably one of the worst ones that she's seen in your 10 years with us, correct? So, but what we've heard in the past, even like before, when we decided that, two years ago, when we decided we were going to give them, give the school committee whatever that percentage was, I can't remember what it was, maybe it was 2, 2 and 1/2, 2, okay. At that point, we had decided, you know, we're going to give you the 2, but we want to see where we can save money or how we can become more efficient. And I think we're still not there yet at this point, but at the same time, it's a complicated puzzle to put together, and my hope is that we can come up with a number, but I think we do need a number to start with, and I don't know where everyone else stands, I can only speak for myself, but I think we really need to listen to all of our constituents in our, in our town that will be affected by this.
I think, Brian, also, the other piece was when we came, and especially with last year, when they came with, when you guys came and said it was a 2.9, 9, I think, was also under the guise that we were looking forward 5 to 10 years. And I think right now, unfortunately, and not to harp on a decision that's been made, because the decision has been made and we have to live with it, but we were moving forward to look 5 to 10 years, and we just, two weeks ago or three weeks ago, went [makes noise] and stopped. So that is, it's, I can see where it would be hesitation in giving. But, so to me, it's like we were looking forward, and then we've kind of pulled back, so now there's that hesitation again to, you know.
And then I think we have some things that have not changed, right? We, we decided two years ago that we would start this facility study, and that was going to be the thing that was going to solve everything, and it's not. We even see in the four options that the operational costs don't come anywhere near to what we're going to build. And the fact that we're at this table again with the same challenge, because we're not doing a far enough lookout, in my opinion, that's not from the council, but I think there needs to be routinely a three to five-year lookout, and then deal with the operational budget year to year. Those things, so the facility study didn't solve the operational problem, and I know that we haven't closed anything yet, but we see from the projections, it won't solve the operational problem, especially when you add the cost to do the building improvements. And we still have this problem that we're going to come to this table every year, and we're going to have this same, you know, 45 minutes of a sort of challenging conversation to say, I think we disagree. Oh, no, we don't. Oh, yes, we do. Oh, no, we don't. That's kind of where we are, and I think it's sort of, I said it two years ago, this is Groundhog Day to me, I don't, I'm not comfortable with it.
Something that I think is important to piggyback on what you just said, Joe, about really looking forward in thinking about the future in regards to the facilities plan change, is for me personally, that's exactly why I advocated to make that lateral change. I don't believe that it's undoing 18 and 1/2 months of work. I was there at the table for most every one of those meetings and fully was, you know, participated in that, so I know how much work went into the facilities plan. I really don't believe that it is negating that work. What I think we weren't taking into, what might not have been taken into consideration really is a historical perspective of enrollment. When my husband and I graduated in '97 and '98, the class sizes were right around 200. We also had Hazard Building online, and we had South Road School online, and the ride requirements in terms of square footage was less than it is today. When I think about where we are now, we're down South Road, we're down Hazard, we're bringing, we're bringing the 5th grade back. I think we play out and see what happens once we bring those 5th graders back, look what our utilization looks like at that point, and we need to be looking forward in terms of what would happen in 15 years, if not sooner, when that population, which historically always has ebbed and flowed up and down, goes back up. And that happens. And that happens generall- generationally. And I don't, I really don't believe that all of a sudden we're not after, you know, generations of cycles of looking at that enrollment going up and down, that we're all of a sudden going to fall off of, of, of the grid. It's just not realistic. And I, I think if you look at other districts that have closed excessive amounts of schools, they've ended up having to reopen, which is at a much higher cost to the taxpayers. Once those buildings have been sold in some cases, we've, sorry, my voice gets cracky towards the end of the night. Once those buildings have been sold and rezoned, then you're now looking at a whole new rebuild, which we know what that cost is. We looked at it for a potential building, a new high school. We're looking at $88 million. Was that, not to our town's cost, but you know, that's the, those are the price tags that you're looking at at brand new schools. So I just think it's really important to be looking at a historical perspective and also looking that much in the future. And talking about the operational savings of A, B, C, or T, you're, you're really hitting the nail on the head that, that, that closing one school or keeping one school opened, which also has been validated by the educational planner and by RGB, the architect, is not going to solve the problem that we're facing. Really, the problem that we're facing is a decrease in state and federal funding and we're being asked to make up the difference. And I believe that the school committee that's in place right now is really invested in looking at, along with administration, I'm not sure where the, where the, the idea that, you know, there's, there's all this animosity, I think we've worked very well together historically, that we need to be innovative in figuring out how we are going to make up that loss in state and federal funding. And some of it is going to come from increasing our efficiencies. But there's only so much that we can do, and that's going to be looking at little things through a microscope, not through binoculars. We need to be looking through binoculars, as Mr. Zan- Zarneski started out this presentation with. We need to be looking at opportunities for grants, opportunities for funding that we have not historically been looking at. So I just really think it's vitally important for everyone to be thinking about the last 30 years and the next 30.
I could say a couple of things. There have, may have been ebbs and flows in student population, but this is unprecedented, right? There have been minor ebbs and flows, mostly growth, though, for the last 30 or 40 years. And then this is a steady decline with projections for further decline. The other thing that we haven't talked about, that I think, there's no question that the aid is what the tax, local taxpayer is being asked to make up. The aid drops. But our cost per student is going up about a grand a year, about $1,000 a year. I've been, this is my fifth budget session and fifth year in a row, and I think when I came on, it was slightly under $18,000 a year. I think this budget puts you at about $22,000. There's a cost per pupil, too, that needs to be addressed, that is separate from the funding. So those, I think those two things are important to point out.
I don't discredit that our enrollment is declining. I, I see the numbers as well, but I think it's just important to be looking at the historical perspective as well as the, the predictions.
I also saw mentioned recently, like, the possibility of potentially making the contingency committee, which was previously a subcommittee of the school committee, making those efforts a part of, I think it's the Economic Development Committee under Town Council. And I think that affords us a great opportunity to have like consistent communication on those population trends, how they might, you know, bleed into future cohorts, cohorts at the schools. I think that's a great idea. I think that would be a good first step in, like, being on the same page, that we're not having this discussion once a year, but that it's like consistent and we all kind of, the, the idea of having the five, 10-year outlook is great, we should all be having it, you know, together, not just once a year. So that's just one final thought on that.
Just very quickly, Councilman DeCruz had previously asked about, you know, this sort of list of things that we put off. And, and this is the other, this is, this two dimensions. This is a give and a take, and, and, you know, every dollar goes one direction and not the other. This is just a short list of things that we have not done because we've been contributing. I mean, last, last year, the property tax transfer was 2.97%. It was a significant property tax transfer last year. That meant we couldn't do a municipal court, which means that we're not generating the revenues because we didn't have a small investment. We're not generating the revenues that we need that would improve our capacity to fund future programs. We need to invest a one-time startup cost to get to being able to sustain programs over the long haul. We don't have an economic development coordinator, one of the few communities I've ever seen that does not have someone who's in charge of maintaining good business relations. And that injures our capacity to grow the value of, of commercial property in town. This isn't, this isn't just pain being visited on one side of the system. We need to figure out how to grow the entire system carefully and responsibly. And sometimes that's going to mean that the balance, you know, tilts with the schools and sometimes it's got to go differently. I'm not suggesting one or the other this year. I'm simply saying we need to be aware of the fact that these are pulling against each other. And we need to, we need to figure out how to look for those efficiencies so that we're pulling together when we can. And when we can't, we need to strategically feel the pinch points. Oh, yeah, that I love. I love you guys. I thought that was a great idea.
He's by-
That, I think that's awesome. I was like, wait a minute, I think that's us.
Yeah. DLE is depending on level of effort, though. Are you just-
We got to agree. What?
And that, one last thing I would like to point out, just about the poor pupil spending, is I, I agree with the town councilors that we need to bring down our cost per pupil. I, I agree with all of you wholeheartedly. Something, however, to keep in mind is what rides reports of per pupil spending is in districts in our surrounding area, near Gansett, is $22,881. And we have South Kingstown at $19,719. We've got Cherahoe at $18,326. We've got Westerly at $20,718. So we're, we're not crazy off of the grid. Can we do better? I believe that we can, and I, I look forward to what our admin team can creatively bring together for us. So I, I agree with you. We can do better, but I think it's important to know that we're not totally off the mark.
Are those numbers recent or are they?
Yep, those are from 2017 to 18.
Somebody gave the example earlier that our property taxes are in the top 20% in Rhode Island. In Washington County, we're in the top 4%. So in property taxes, we all know the bulk of it goes to schools. So you're doing a comparative of a very expensive county. So, I mean, you know, move-
I agree with you. It's just important to keep him, for people that may not-
Right.
-know what that, when we say we have a high cost per pupil, I, I think it is really relevant to make sure that we have the comparatives as well.
Compare it to some of the districts that Mr. Benjamin was referring to tonight. Now, it's substantially more. It's just what you're comparing to.
All right. I think we've gone over a lot tonight, and there's much to consider in the future. I think the sense of the council that I get is to look at 1% as something to build from. Come back, show us the horrible cuts that's going to entail. Maybe we rethink that number. Personally, I think I, given the situation we face and historical precedent, 2.5% is not an unreasonable ask, to be honest. But I, you know, I too want to see what 1% looks like. So thank you all for being a part of this conversation. At this point, I would like to consider a motion for adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn. Second.
So moved, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries.
Did you see my cover of my vine?
Why is that happening?
[laughter][1778.71]